Well, very, very welcome to the meeting and to the town hall. And it's good to see so many people engaging with our democratic processes today. I hope we don't put you off and you remain engaged with us. As always with these meetings, we'll start with some quick introductions. I'm David Barker. I'm a local councillor for Richmond Ward and I'm going to be chairing the subcommittee this morning. To my right are the members of the committee who will introduce themselves. Councillor Henry Hottage, member for Hillsborough.
Councillor Karen McGowan, member for Burleigh.
You'll also notice a number of other faces staring at you from this top table. Could I ask you to introduce yourselves and explain why you're here, please?
Another one. Thank you. If I can work the mic, I'm Malcolm Hope and I'll be legal adviser to the panel.
Good morning. Samantha Bond, licensing lawyer for Sheffield City Council.
I'm Shimla Finch, I'm from the Licensing Service and I'll be presenting the report today.
My name is Gareth Barrett, I'm a Licensing Enforcement Officer for the Licensing Service.
Morning. I'm Philippa Bedett, a Democratic Services Officer.
And could I now ask the applicants to formally introduce yourselves, please?
I'm Dominic Madden from Electric Group.
Good morning, Chair, members of the committee. My name is Paddy Worratt, I'm a licensing solicitor.
And could I just ask the interested parties to introduce themselves as well? Even though it's not on my list, we'll move on to them.
Good morning, Chair and your colleagues. My name is Sarah Clover and I'm a barrister and I'm representing the Leadmill this morning.
Well, thank you, everyone, and again, welcome. You'll note, if you've got as far as page 418 in the pack, if you have the same pack as us, which isn't always the case, there is a process for these hearings outlined on there. And you'll be pleased to know that item four, it says the legal adviser to the committee will outline the procedure, so I don't even have to read out loud. So could I ask Malcolm to outline the procedure today, please?
Thank you, Chair. Just before I start with that, there are quite a lot of persons watching and participating in the proceedings who may not have experienced licensing matters before. And it might be useful if I set out just in broad terms what the hearing is and is not about and what the subcommittee can and cannot do. Now, the subcommittee is made up of three elected councillors from the council's Licensing Act Committee. They make the decision on this application. I'm the legal adviser to the subcommittee. At any time during these proceedings, the subcommittee may receive legal advice from me and that can be in open session or in private. Now, the application before members of the subcommittee is made by MVL Properties 2017 Limited, which applies for a premises licence in respect of a premises known as a Leadmill at 6 to 7 Leadmill Road in Sheffield. A separate premises licence is already in place there, that licence being held by the Leadmill Limited with Mr Ian Lawler as designated premises supervisor. The Licensing Act does not prevent more than one premises licence from existing at the same premises at the same time. The grant or refusal of premises licence to this applicant does not directly impact the pre-existing premises licence. That licence is neither transferred nor is it extinguished at this hearing. The pre-existing premises licence will continue in effect at the end of this hearing as it does at the start. The purpose of this hearing is purely to consider the application submitted by MVL Properties. It is in no way a review of the pre-existing premises licence held by the Leadmill Limited. The operation of the premises may be relevant to matters relating to the promotion of the licensing objectives, but this subcommittee has no power over the Leadmill Limited's premises licence at this hearing and cannot interfere with that licence in any way. Equally, this is no review of any other premises licence. In the objections before the subcommittee, references made to three other licensed premises operated by the applicant, the subcommittee has no jurisdiction over those other premises licences, which are the responsibility of the relevant local licensing authorities, Newcastle City Council, Bristol City Council and Lambeth Council. The operation of those venues may be relevant considerations for the subcommittee in respect to the applicant's experience, compliance history, ability to promote the licensing objectives and such like, as may the fact that those premises licences continue in effect. The subcommittee will consider representations from persons who have first-hand knowledge of the matters they raise, as well as others who address matters that they have heard or read about. This can all be relevant to the decision reached, but the weight to be attached is a matter for the subcommittee. The subcommittee has jurisdiction over only one matter, which is MVL Properties' application for a premises licence. There is reference within the written representations to a commercial dispute concerning the lease of the premises in question. This is not a matter which the subcommittee can adjudicate on. The lease dispute will be considered at another place and time by a different tribunal. The applicant's intentions for the premises may be relevant, but the subcommittee cannot encroach on matters beyond its remit and will not seek to do so. What the subcommittee does seek to do is to promote the four licensing objectives, the prevention of crime and disorder, the prevention of public nuisance, promotion of public safety and protection of children from harm. The licensing regime itself is often described as a permissive one, the starting point being that applications for premises licences should be granted and where no relevant representations are raised, a licence is granted without the need for a hearing. However, where relevant representations are received which raise concerns about the promotion of one or more of the licensing objectives, the licensing authority is obliged to hold this kind of hearing to consider representations and determine what is appropriate and proportionate to promote the licensing objectives. If the subcommittee is satisfied that the grant of a licence subject to conditions consistent with the operating schedule and other conditions which have been agreed by the applicant will be consistent with promoting the licensing objectives, then the application should be granted. If the subcommittee is not satisfied, but this is enough to address concerns, it must consider whether additional conditions will be appropriate and proportionate to promote those licensing objectives. And only if the subcommittee concludes that the imposition of such conditions would not be sufficient to promote the licensing objectives, should the application be refused. The participation of the public is an important part of the licensing process and there's been significant public interest in this application, and so arrangements have been made for the public to watch the proceedings from within the council chamber and on-screen elsewhere in the town hall, plus this hearing is being livestreamed. This way, all those who wish to follow the proceedings should be able to do so. Many representations have been submitted by members of the public and a significant number have indicated that they wish to address the subcommittee at this hearing. Those who have indicated that they wish to speak will be given the opportunity to do so. However, given the number of people who wish to be heard, it will be helpful if everyone could avoid merely repeating what they've put in writing, as the subcommittee has already read the papers with care. If participants want to expand upon matters raised in their written representations, they will have the opportunity to do so. But as many people wish to be heard, the subcommittee may ask participants to keep time limits and may ask persons to nominate someone to speak for a number of the objectors where the issues they've raised overlap. When invited to speak, there is a microphone at the front, so please step up to that and speak clearly. This will make sure that you can be heard clearly by everyone in this room and those following the hearing online. And many people have strongly held views on the issues here, but it's important that all those taking part are able to speak without interruption. Those who have indicated that they wish to address the subcommittee will be given the opportunity to do so and should wait until they're invited to speak by the chair. Everyone present should avoid allowing any strong feelings to overwhelm their self-control and should treat all others with the same respect and courtesy they would wish to receive themselves. These proceedings are conducted in public view, but the subcommittee can exclude anyone from the hearing if they cause disruption, so please hear others out and wait to be invited to speak. In terms of the procedure that will be followed this morning, the licensing officer will introduce the report and then questions concerning the report can be asked by both members and the applicant. The licensing officer will introduce in turn the interested parties or be asked to detail their relevant representations. As I mentioned, it would assist if speakers could avoid merely repeating the contents of what they've already put in writing. Members may ask questions of those who are invited to speak and with the leave of the chair, the applicant or his representative may also ask questions of those interested parties. The applicant and his representative will be asked to then detail the application, provide any clarification on it and respond to the representations made. They may be asked questions by members of the panel and with the leave of the chair, may be asked questions by other parties present. The applicant will be given the opportunity to sum up the application and then the licensing officer will detail the options available to the panel. There will then be a private session for members of the subcommittee to take legal advice and consider the application. At that stage, livestream will stop and everyone will be invited to leave. The decision of the subcommittee will be given in due course in accordance with the requirements of the licensing legislation, but members will have a significant amount to consider and so it's not possible to confirm at this stage when the decision will be announced other than that it will be within the statutory time limit. And that's all I have to say in procedure, Chair, but as you know, you have two preeminent licensing lawyers before you, Mr Worratt, the applicant, Miss Clover for the Leadmill, and they wish to come, may wish to come back on something that I have said. You'll appreciate that lawyers will often disagree as to law, its interpretation and its application, so before the licensing officer sets out the report, perhaps you permit them the opportunity to address anything arising from what I have said.
Most certainly. Would anyone like to make any comments on the processes outlined there?
Yeah, the only thing that I would like to say is that I think Mr Hope has reduced the amount of time that I'll have to spend making my submissions to you because he's very helpfully set out to you some of the things I would have liked to have said. So I have no issues and I'm very grateful for his very careful opening.
Thank you.
It's Mr Hope. I wouldn't dream of it.
Thank you. Hopefully, that process is fairly clear. It's certainly a lot more simple than it sounded there. Basically, the committee will listen to everybody who's got anything to say today and we will consider all the evidence we've received and come to a decision based on that. We tend not to set time limits for people and if people have got something to say, we encourage them to come and tell us what they want us to hear, because it's important that we hear all that in making our decisions. So anybody who wishes to speak won't be stopped from speaking by me and we will take legal advice on the weight to be given to anything said by any of the parties here today. So I'm not going to delay things any longer. You'll notice that the next section of this is that the licensing officer will introduce the report and the licensing officer today is Shimla, so could you introduce the report, please?
Thank you, Chair. This report is to consider an application for the grant of a premises licence under the Licensing Act 2003 for the Leadmill and Leadmore Road in Sheffield. A full application was received on the 26th of April 2013 and was made by MVL Properties 2017 Limited. A copy of the application and documents are attached at Appendix A of the report. This includes a copy of the current existing licence in place. The consultation period for the application ended on the 24th of May 2023 and the applicant agreed conditions with three responsible authorities, the Health Protection Service, the Environmental Protection Service and South Yorkshire Police. Copies of the agreed conditions can be found at Appendix B. The application has been referred to the licensing subcommittee due to many unresolved representations as detailed at paragraph 3.1 of the report. There are no specific financial implications arising from this application, however, additional costs may be incurred if the matter goes to appeal. Our legal position is detailed at paragraph six, which requires a licensing authority to carry out these functions with a view of promoting the licensing objectives of the Act and to have regard to our published statement of licensing policy. All parties have been provided with information required in the regulations regarding the hearing and is attached at Appendix D. It is recommended that members carefully consider the representations made and take steps as the subcommittee consider appropriate for the promotion of the licensing objectives. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Shimla. Have members got any questions regarding the report at all? Does the applicant have any questions regarding the report? So, that then takes us on to the interested parties to state your case. And I'm not sure how, entirely in your hands is how do you wish to do this? If you wish these people to speak first who have asked to speak, or would you prefer to present your case first? Entirely in your hands, so over to you.
Thank you, Chair. It might be helpful if I do go first and I notice that this hearing is scheduled for two days. We're very much hoping that we can get this done in a day. That would seem to be expeditious. I am speaking on behalf of the Leadmill as the current licensee. There's a lot of public feeling, as you've seen, and the objections have been put in. I think I am wrapping up all of those representations in what I say. I think there are still a few people who will want to say their piece to the committee today. I'm hoping that what I say will be able to shorten what they feel they need to say to supplement it, so I think we've got it down somewhat. And I wonder then if you would indulge me for just a little bit longer in what I say. I promise to be succinct, but then I can encapsulate everything and hopefully that will move matters forward. I'm accompanied today by Mr Philip Mills, who runs the Leadmill currently, and Ian Lawler, the DPS, and a number of other people as well, who would all be available to answer any questions that you have, but I will be doing the main representation to you. And you do have a written representation in your bundle from the Leadmill, again encapsulating the key points, and I'm not intending to read through that or repeat it, and I would invite the committee just to consider that again when it comes to time to make the decision. Some issues have been superseded. One of the points I was making in that representation is that there were no conditions being proposed. That's now changed slightly and in your Appendix B, there are some conditions and I'll be talking about those in a little bit of detail. There's a lot of love for the Leadmill and no doubt you have picked up on that and its status as a cultural icon. I will not be speaking about that either. And you've heard Mr Hope refer to landlord and tenant proceedings, the commercial dispute. I will not be referring to that other than, as he indicated, for context and for certain practical impacts that it may have for these proceedings. So I am very much licensing objective focused and predominantly, I'm here to talk about the law. Everybody will be very excited to hear. And with that in mind then, could I start expeditiously with the application itself, Appendix A? And that does touch on the previous representation that was made and the case law, Extreme Oyster, because what you have in front of you purports to be an application for a shadow licence and you will now no doubt be up to speed with what a shadow licence is. I've canvassed it in the written representation, you'll have had some familiarity with Extreme Oyster. It's a mirror. It's intended to be a mirror and it exists for a purpose. It's perfectly legitimate to do it, but a shadow licence is one that protects the second licensee's interests and as its name would indicate, it's a faithful replication of the licence that exists. Can I ask you, please, to look at the application itself to start with and find page 19, where it talks about application details? And there you will see the question asked on the form, in what capacity are you applying for the premises licence? And the box is ticked a limited company or a limited liability partnership. And we know that's correct and we know that's MVL Properties 2017 Limited. And then towards, further down the bottom of the page, it says confirm the following and there are some more boxes to tick and it ticks the box, I am carrying on or proposing to carry on a business which involves the use of the premises for licensable activities. Now, already that's unusual for a shadow licence. That's not what a licence, a shadow licence is usually for. Extreme Oyster sets it out in some detail. I have summarised it in the representation. It's usually to protect a landlord's interest in case the incumbent who is actually running the business and doing that thing, carrying on or proposing to carry on, does a run-up. And the rest of the application would seem to follow in that vein, because if you then scroll down to page 20 or turn to page 20, it starts to tell you what the application is all about. So in section five of 21, operating schedule, it says, when do you want the premises licence to start? And because there were some glitches with getting this application on the road, it says 29th of April 2023. Provide a general description of the premises. And then the box begins at the bottom of page 20 and it says, this is an application for a shadow licence in the name of the landlord, the existing licence is in the name of the tenant, applying for a shadow licence in exactly the same terms as the existing, the Leadmill Limited licence. The two licences will not operate at the same time and the purpose behind the application is not to create an extra licence. We will agree to notify you if for any reason the landlord chooses to operate the premises under the shadow licence and not the existing licence. Pausing there, I ask you to ask yourselves this question, who will notify who and when? And what is the sanction if they don't? Because it's not a condition, is it? And you wouldn't normally have that little tidbit in a licence application, because it wouldn't normally be necessary. Imagine all the times you've dealt with licence applications and you see it written in there somewhere, we promise to tell you when we're going to run this licence. And I would be willing to bet you've never seen that before. Just park that for a moment. In the previous application, the applicant stated that they were intending to run the licence within three months and there was a little bit of narrative in there about they would notify everyone when the previous licence was revoked. Note the inaccuracy of the language. That wording has disappeared from this current application. The application goes on to say at page 21, at the top, the shadow licence is a legitimate licence and allows the landlord to have his own licence to protect his position should the tenant do anything to put the premises licence in jeopardy. That's what we recognise for a shadow licence. It's permissible to have two licences in existence in this way, she says, as determined by the High Court in Extreme Oyster, Star Oyster Limited and Guildford Borough Council in 2013. It is. That's true. But what does it mean now? Because now we have a declaration that the applicant intends to carry on a business. It's a 24-hour licence. Let's talk about the DPS. Very important person for any licence, designated premises supervisor. Page 32 of this application, there's the box that says, who's your DPS going to be? And it says, to be advised before the licence becomes relied upon. And again, I would invite you to think back over all the previous applications that you have ever seen. It says, we'll tell you later who the DPS is going to be for a 24-hour licence or any licence. We don't know. Haven't thought about that yet. And this is one of the many points that the police should have put their foot down upon and said, no, you don't have a licence granted, maybe a shadow licence, but even then, probably not, you don't have a 24-hour licence granted that you could operate the next day that it's been granted without a DPS that everybody has scrutinised and is happy with. No, it's not done. And if I made an application for a client of mine and said, I'll tell you who the DPS is later, I'd be laughed out of the room. Page 35 says the conditions will remain in exactly the same terms as the existing licence, except they won't, will they? And we'll come to that in a moment. So we've got no one specified as a premises licence operator. We've got a company that is applying, or are they? Because actually, the application is signed by the agent, Woods Worr. So the applicant technically is Woods Worr on behalf of MVL. So you don't really know who the operator is going to be. It's not one of the companies that runs any of the other three licences, the electric licences down in other parts of the country. And we don't have a DPS. So on paper, you have a Frankenstein's monster licence that you cannot control. Is it a shadow licence? Is it not a shadow licence? Can it be operated immediately? Can it not be operated immediately? They'll tell you when they're going to do so, who are they going to tell, why are they going to tell them, when are they going to tell them? We don't know and there's nothing that anybody can do to hold them to it. Let's look at the current premises licence, because that's important too. And it's set out at page 44 and it's very unusual for a 24-hour licence or indeed for any licence, because it has very few conditions on it, which is a luxury perhaps, it is testament to the current incumbent that nobody has ever thought it necessary to load this licence with more conditions, but that means it is what it is. And at page 51, you will see five conditions on there, which is almost unheard of for a licence of this scope. And that those conditions for the main part don't have anything particular to do with what we are concerned with. So there's one there in relation to adult entertainment, general off-sales for over-the-counter sales authorised between certain hours, off-sales by way of telephone order. We're not concerned with any of those. We've got a challenge 21 on there and then CCTV as existing shall be provided and I'll come back to that in a moment. So as unusual as it is, you've got a trusted incumbent who's been there for so many years that he has evolved with the premises and every compliance that you would require has evolved naturally with him, but you can't do that with a new licensee. And you wouldn't do that with a new licensee. In my first case in the representation, the written representation, was where are the police? Where are the responsible authorities in all of this? You can't just have it on trust that a new untried operation will come into Sheffield and inherit a licence with a paucity of conditions like that and say, well, we hope it'll all work well. You wouldn't grant anybody a brand-new licence like that. It's not up to modern standard. Imagine if somebody new came in to you with those five conditions on a nightclub, any drinking establishment, 24-hour licence and said, that's all we want, that's all we need. They'd be laughed out of town again. Originally, the police were not going to make any representation at all and it has come to attention that somebody has been suggesting that if objections are placed, Mr Madden might sue them. I don't know where that's come from. It is obviously blatant nonsense, but for some reason, there has been an unusual reluctance in the responsible authorities to step up to the plate. So the police were encouraged, not least by my written representation, to have another go and see if they would like to consider more than five conditions on there and clearly they have considered that they would. And that's a no-brainer. But it's nowhere near enough and the conditions that have been proposed are not very good qualitatively, and I will look at those in detail in a moment. Notice this, it is not at all clear whether the conditions that are proposed in Annex B are in addition to the conditions that are on the existing licence or instead of. You're not told that, so the application that you still overtly have in front of you and nobody has suggested that it's going to be varied or amended, that application says the conditions will remain the same. So at this point in time, you are uncertain as to whether you are adding those five and the ones in Appendix B. There's contradiction between them, if so, and if not, you're losing some of those. And why would you? So just have a think about that. Premises like this going to new operators in modern times would typically have around 20 modern conditions or so. Bringing it up to modern standards, you'd have event management plans, you'd have policies and so on. And all his other licences, Mr Madden has dozens of conditions and he knows this. Electric Brixton has 71 conditions on it. You've got that licence in your pack and the licence is at page 76 for your reference and the conditions are at page 83 and 84. And for what might be regarded as approximately similar premises, it gives you a flavour of the sorts of conditions that you might be looking at to control appropriately premises that are dealing with high numbers of members of the public for their protection, for their comfort, for the efficient running of events, for the prevention of inappropriate... for the efficient running of events, for, um, the prevention of, uh, inappropriate promotions and, uh, crowd control and SIA and all of those sorts of things. Uh, so I invite you to look at the conditions on the comparable premises, the electric premises, which the allegations go on not being run very well. Uh, and ask why Mr Madden did not suggest equivalent conditions for the lead mill. No conditions proposed initially. And then in discussion with the responsible authorities, again, what might be regarded as rather thin pickings, uh, relative to the other premises that he runs. And this is in spite of your statement of licensing policy, uh, which I have set out in quite some detail in the original written representation. Uh, and there has been zero compliance with the Sheffield Statement of Licensing Policy. Uh, and I would invite you to ask, why not? Uh, why has there been zero, uh, compliance? There is, uh, I'm going to say it, an arrogance that sits behind this application. Uh, and it is evinced, not least in the, uh, statement that Mr Madden has put forward to support it. And it, it sounds a little bit like, I'm Dominic Madden. I know my stuff and I know Elton John. So, uh, there's no reason for me to consider the Sheffield Statement of Licensing Policy. Uh, I don't need to do that. It, it'll be fine. Trust me. Mr Madden has a nightclub brand under the electric name. Uh, he's already registered Electric Sheffield. He can't use Leadmill because that is trademarked. And they are very different animals from what the Leadmill currently is. You must at least prepare for the possibility that Mr Madden would turn the Leadmill into one of his brand, Electric, in the style of the reviews that you have seen. And the weight that you end up putting on those will be a matter for you. But it is more likely, uh, than not. The context and its context only, uh, is the hostile takeover. There is not a lot you can do about that. But the relevance of that context is things like credibility, integrity, intention, uh, which is a word I'd written down and a word that Mr Hope, uh, said earlier as well, and the future. Uh, and one of the very important questions, uh, that you would need to ask yourselves is what would happen practically? If you granted, uh, this licence to Mr Madden? I say today it wouldn't be because you'll take some time to consider it, but in principle today. It's clear that Mr Madden or any company of his, uh, physically could not occupy and operate the premises immediately. And that's what the hostile takeover proceedings are all about. He has to evict Mr Mills through the courts in order to gain occupation, in order to be able to run, uh, a business. It will be a bitter battle. It will take a long time. And he needs a licence to have any hope of succeeding. That's what this is all about. Hence this unholy mess. Mr Madden's got himself into a tangle. He needed a bare licence, just the piece of paper to be able to show the court, to be able to pursue the eviction, say, I've got the cap- capacity, the capability of running the premises. You can't take a lease from a resistant tenant if you can't show you've got entitlement to run the premises. But he has a dilemma. Because a shadow licence, a bare licence, won't do in this case for all the reasons we have just been exploring. It's an unusual licence. It's a twenty-four hour licence. It has hardly any conditions on it already. It's not suitable to be a shadow licence. And so we have this, uh, dilemma. Uh, and in come the responsible authorities to plug the gap and to make up the shortfall of the conditions. Now, Appendix B is just a list of agreed conditions and they are not here. And that's wrong. And I'd appeal that in and of itself. Because, uh, you should have seen as the decision-making tribunal, you should have seen the representations upon which those conditions were based. You would not wish to impose conditions unless you were satisfied that they satisfied all the conditions tests. They need to be reasonable. They need to be proportionate. They need to be appropriate. They need to answer an issue of some description. They need to, um, be clear. And they need to be coherent. And everybody needs to know how to enforce them. And there are questions about these conditions. And you would have liked, I respectfully suggest, who have asked the responsible authorities some questions about these conditions? Why these ones and not others? Why not more? Are they dovetailed with the ones already on there? Who wrote them? It is a question you might be asking yourselves after I've finished with them. Uh, and, uh, what is their purpose and so on? It's not just a secret agreement between Mr Madden and the responsible authorities behind closed doors as to what conditions shall go on this licence. It's your decision as to what conditions go on this licence. And unless you are to accept the responsible authorities without question, and you are not invited to do that by anybody, including the Secretary of State, Section one eight-two guidance, then there are questions to be asked. Paragraph nine point twelve of the Secretary of State, Section one eight-two guidance, says that you do take the police advice on issues of crime and disorder. Uh, but you don't take it at face value because it must withstand the scrutiny. Uh, and those are, uh, case law legal terms. Withstand the scrutiny to which they would be subjected at a hearing. They're not here. They should be. It's wrong. And you should require them to be here, uh, to justify the conditions that they've imposed. Let's take a look at them. Appendix B, page fifty-five. Um, the, the applicant has agreed conditions, uh, with three responsible authorities. The health and protection services, uh, condition, forgive my brutality, uh, is not worthy and it's written with. Um, there's nothing in it to say that it has to be complied with. Contrast the environmental health condition, which at the very least says there will be a management plan. Um, and it will be complied with. Now, anyone who does planning will know that's a standard approach, uh, to say that there's going to be one. And, and when there is one, you will have to comply with it. But we're not really here, uh, about the health services concerns because it's really unusual for health per se to have a powerful, uh, role to play in the control of a licence. Environmental Protection Act conditions are problematic uh, because they don't say whether they intend you to disapply the deregulation rules or not. So you will know from the Live Music Act two thousand and twelve and the twenty fourteen regulations that music and entertainment within certain parameters uh, is not licensable at all. And any conditions on a licence will be disapplied unless they are imposed by way of a review. Uh, so these particular conditions don't specify. Uh, are they intended only to be above the deregulation parameters? Uh, or are, are they asking you to remove deregulation rights, which you cannot do anyway? Um, they don't say. It, it's a question you have wanted to ask. But noise isn't the major issue in this case. Crime and disorder is the major issue, so I can move on. So it's the police condition, um, that I am particularly concerned about. Um, the first condition, the use of door staff will be risk assessed on an ongoing basis. By whom? By the licence holder or the premise supervisor? I don't know what a premise supervisor is. If it's meant to be the designated premises supervisor, it would be very nice if the professionals in the matter could spell it correctly. Um, the risk assessment will be done by the two personages that we do not know who they are. We don't know who will be. We may know who the premises licence applicant is, but we don't know who the operator is going to be, who would actually be doing such a risk assessment. And we don't have a DPS. So the police are asking the people that they do not know to do the thing that we do not know what it will be. The, the, the use of door staff will be risk assessed on an ongoing basis. Where engaged? If engaged, uh, they'll be licensed by the security industry authority. Well, the last part is a bit embarrassing because that's a mandatory condition. So again, whoever's written this covers themselves in no glory. Um, so on the basis of said risk assessment, uh, it's entirely possible for the licence holder and the designated premises supervisor to say, we risk assess that we need none. Thank you very much indeed. Off we go. And there's nothing anyone can do about it. It, it's a complete compliance with that condition. Uh, and it's, uh, very disappointing. The keeping of registers, there's no obligation to show the registers to anybody. The search policy, um, the premises licence holder will have a search policy for customers, including the consideration for metal detection wands. It's written like a bag of rats. What is the consideration for metal detection wands? Does it mean we have to have consideration for metal detection wands? Does it mean we will consider whether we're going to have them and then consider that we won't? Uh, what, what does it mean? Who's written this stuff? Um, the search policies. Search policies, uh, further on in that sentence. All customers will be subject to the standard search policy. Uh, there will be enhanced searching used periodically with a dynamic risk assessment. I don't know what any of that means. Uh, and, and, uh, unless I'm told to the contrary, neither does anyone else. These are just words unless they're actually explained in a policy of some description. If they're unpacked and anybody knows what they mean. Imagine the compliance issues, the enforcement issues with this. Somebody turns up and says, well, you, you, you didn't. And we'll see some examples of this later because Mr Butterworth, Daryl Butterworth, uh, shows you examples from the electric premises that don't do their searches properly. And the police or an enforcement officer turns up and says, you haven't done your search policy properly. Uh, and Electric Sheffield goes, yes, we have. We were using our standard search policy. Well, where is that? Well, it, it's on the back of an envelope somewhere. It, it's shoddy. Um, outdoor drinks won't be used other than in external areas provided for the purpose. So the licensee or the DPS or the general manager says, I, I, I did. I, I designated that area for, um, for outdoor use. I did it ten minutes ago. Um, the use of glass alternative drinking vessels. Don't know what that means. In accordance with the premises assessment of risks. So for SIA, it's the premises licence holder or supervisor who will do risk assessments. Now it's the premises themselves that have to do a risk assessment. Uh, and on and on. A suitable number of radios. None of this means anything at all. Um, whoever has drafted it, uh, uh, has done so extraordinarily badly. And all of this would need a comprehensive rewrite. Uh, it's not, uh, and it's a hundred percent appealable if these conditions were imposed in their current guise. Notice there's no age restriction policy at all. Uh, there's something in the training condition that staff will be trained. There's no requirement to impose the policy at twenty-one or twenty-five as the age authorisation policy of the premises. Uh, and notice the smorgasbord of the other electric premises. Uh, Brixton and SWX Bristol have challenge twenty-five. Newcastle has challenge twenty-one. Now, i- it's not the responsible authority's responsibility. Nor is it yours, nor is it mine to write this licence and these conditions for Mr Madden. It is his responsibility and nor should it be done ad hoc in the middle of a hearing. It should be a proper, thoughtful, considered job uh, that meets the purpose of the exercise. Uh, and note that these conditions are agreed. Well, that means, as I have clearly indicated, that this licence is no longer a shadow licence and should not be called as such. Um, you can't grant a shadow licence. You wouldn't be granting a shadow licence if you were to go down the line of the Appendix B conditions. And if it's not going to be a shadow licence, then we move to the next problem. Uh, the application's false. And on page forty-one, there is a warning that says, if anything in the application, uh, is false, uh, that constitutes an offence. So from a legal point of view, you couldn't grant the application in front of you as applied for. It's going to have to be amended. The concerns about the licence have been on the table for quite some time and you have not had a rewritten application presented before you. Now, I don't know if the intention is to do that in the middle of a hearing uh, and to scribble something down on a piece of paper to amend this application so that it is not false and it is not in breach of that declaration. Um, but I maintain that the application form comprises an offence as written and I will leave that with you and move on to the next problem. Um, which I've touched on already, uh, which is the applicant here is the agent, Woods Were. Um, the company in whose benefit the application is made is not one of the operators of any of the other clubs. And there is nothing to say that this company, MVL twenty seventeen, is going to be, uh, the operator or indeed the premises licence holder. And they are two different things in any event. So I ask rhetorically, who is going to address these new conditions and do the risk assessments? And will they be submitted simultaneously to Mr Mills's operation? Or is the intention to submit them after eviction? Um, which is likely to be no sooner than the end of twenty twenty-four when you take the commercial, um, proceedings into account. Uh, and, and none of this confusion should be necessary. Um, but it is. Mr Madden has asked for the licence with immediate effect. Uh, technically from April, in fact. He could have applied for it from a future date. That could have been part of the application. He could have asked for a provisional statement. Does anyone ever remember those? They exist. They have a purpose. This is the purpose of a provisional statement. It's perfect for the job. No, not used. Uh, so an immediate licence authorising immediate trading is what is on the table. And in the meantime, there would be nothing to stop Mr Madden transferring it to somebody completely different. Next problem with the conditions. The conditions relating to infrastructure and specifically the CCTV. There are two different conditions now, uh, because this isn't a shadow licence. You've got the condition on Mr Mills's licence, uh, which says thou shalt maintain the existing CCTV system. You've got a rival condition in this application that says thou shalt change it. And it says, do it now. It says, when the premises are open. It doesn't say when this licensee is operating. It says, when the premises are open, a new CCTV system shall be agreed with the police and shall be this and shall be that and shall be all singing and all dancing, uh, which, um, nobody knows, uh, whether Mr Mills's system complies with it or not. But in any event, he isn't required to because he is overtly on his licence required to stick with what he's got. And so you have two conditions that fight with each other. Uh, who is going to be in breach of their condition if this licence is granted as required? Now, if the police were here, they could explain what they were thinking or not. Uh, and what it is they actually want. Radios, similar problem. Uh, the infrastructure, it's required now. The next problem. Making good progress. It might not feel like it, but I am. The next problem, the landlord and tenant proceedings, we know, won't conclude until late, late next year at best. Meanwhile, what is Mr Mills to do? If you grant this licence? Essentially granting the licence away from under him to a party who cannot operate it immediately? Should Mr Mills politely carry on operating for the benefit of Sheffield and Mr Madden? And hold the fort? Uh, and do his duty until Mr Madden is ready to snatch it off him? Is, is that what's expected and required? This is a practical problem. Uh, Mr Madden stands to make a huge profit, uh, from these proceedings. I say nothing of it. That's business. But that is what this is all about. Are the staff expected to turn up, uh, and do their jobs waiting for Mr Madden to swoop? Uh, would they continue knowing that this is their future? Would they down tools? Would the lead mill stand empty until Mr Mad- Madden is ready? Uh, what does that do to the culture? Uh, and... What does that do to the culture and the reputation and the economy of the city? I'm allowed to mention economy because Lord Justice Toulson does so in Hope and Glory, paragraph 42. And it will be emblazoned in letters of fire on Mr Hope's brain as to what this paragraph says, but I'll remind him anyway. Lord Justice Toulson gives a list of all the things that are relevant to a licensing decision maker and is a 360 degree round view of what is relevant. And he starts off with the economic value, the economic benefit of the licence. We know perfectly well in these times and eras and letters that have come out from secretaries of state, that your local economy is a vital, important part of your licensing decision making remit. And you've got lots of policies about it as well. It's not to be ignored. It is important. So you are entitled. In fact, you must look and see what this application as made in front of you now would do to your local community and your local economy. And that touches also on the reputation that is incoming and you will make of that what you will. Although I note that Mr Madden in putting forward his statement hasn't sought to challenge what is said about the other premises and the incidents and the reviews that have been put forward. He doesn't say, I don't know where those have come from, that's got nothing to do with us and I can demonstrate from our incident logs that blah, blah, blah and blah. The only reference to it I can see is Mr Daryl Butterworth, the police inspector at one time and now consultant, says, I find it hard to believe that there wouldn't be some intervention at Electric. And he's talking about Brixton specifically, if all these things were correct. It's a poor argument because nobody seems to be suggesting that the empirical evidence in front of you is anything other than correct. And when it comes to the reports, the stabbing in 2019 at Electric Brixton and so forth, it's empirical stuff. Page 71 of your bundle, you've got empirical evidence about SWX in Bristol in the form of the cumulative impact assessment and the way in which the police ranked those premises. Four out of 20 for assaults, 54 assaults in a two-year period, second out of seven premises for incidents, 288 incidents. Lead Mill hasn't got anything remotely like this. Police in Bristol needed SWX to remain within the cumulative impact assessment even while they were busy relaxing the cumulative impact assessment area because of the preponderance of incidents. So it's not enough for Mr Butterworth to say, well, I'm sure somebody would have done something if it was that bad. How bad it is would appear to be empirical. I'm going to touch on some of the objections, hopefully relatively briefly. I don't have very much more to say to you now and I'm grateful for your patience, but I hope I have covered the main meat of these objections. I'm interested in objection number one. So this is your appendix C, brackets little two, starting at page 211 of your bundle. Objection number one, page 215, is Sasha Lord. Now Sasha Lord is the night time advisor for Manchester, but he's also the chairman of the Nighttime Industries Association. He's Mike Kill's boss, in a nutshell. Mike Kill is the chief executive and he's written a reference for Mr Madden. Well, he didn't write it himself, as I will demonstrate in a moment or two. But you've got Sasha Lord saying, don't grant this licence. And you've got Mike Kill saying, ah, it'll be fine. And I just ask you to pick up on that. The objections are all very similar. They are all picking up on the same reputational issues and not massively assisted by the level of repetition, but you are assisted by a few things which I'll highlight to you. Firstly, the themes of the complaints and the incidents. And those themes crop up again and again consistently across all three of Mr Madden's other premises and that is indicative. And the first theme is laxity around underage access in the context of a no underage policy in a condition on this application. You will work through at your leisure, at your will, these particular objections, but I ask you to pick up on the preponderance of that theme, laxity about underage persons getting into the premises. The second theme is overselling tickets and overcrowding. And that's especially concerning in the context of an arson attack in Bristol. One does not ever want to see those two phenomena in any close proximity to one another. But it is a consistent theme across Brixton and Bristol and Newcastle. It's a thing. Mr Madden sells too many tickets. There is a fundamental disregard for safety, which is never to be trifled with, and it crops up in the queues and it crops up waiting for cloakrooms and it crops up in event spaces, packed venues, poor experience, troubles with ventilation and the like. The third theme is aggressive, unprofessional, rude, arrogant door staff. And again, it crops up over and over again in all three venues. Now, that's a choice because the licensee chooses the door security company. You have no idea who Mr Madden would be choosing for the Lead Mill. The SIA, who appear to be retained continuously and the other venues are poorly trained at best and poorly managed. And we don't know who Mr Madden would use at the Lead Mill. He doesn't know himself, let's be honest, because he was hoping for just a piece of paper to get him to the next stage. He hasn't got that far. And the police only want a risk assessment by somebody at some stage. You have no control over that door security situation at all. Now, you would expect the conditions proposed for this application to address all of these worrying themes overtly in some detail to instill reassurance and confidence, but nothing is offered. The next thing you are assisted by particularly from the wealth of objections that you've got is the people who have first hand experience of the other premises. So I invite you to winnow out and I'll assist with some page references, not just those who've done some internet research and have picked up on the same reviews, but those who've lived there and been there. There are quite a few of those. I'll give you the references and allow you to absorb them in your own time. I won't take up the hearing's time with it, but I've got, and I may have missed some, objection nine at page 223, objection 17 at page 231, objection 20, sorry, I run out of page references now, objection 21, which has got an allegation of a personal experience of a friend being raped in Bristol. I ask you to put that in the context of the police cumulative impact assessment material about the high sex assault rate in Bristol. And I ask you to note that there's no reference in this application to addressing vulnerability, vulnerability training, protection of women, or scandalous, nothing. There's nothing in there. And I'll be saying a few more words about that in a moment because that engages your public sector equality duty. So there isn't even any training for the staff on those sorts of issues, let alone conditions that would address the matter. Objection 41, Bristol, 44 Bristol, objection 56, Brixton, objection 67, 75, 124, 127, all personal experiences in Brixton. Objection 40, I've pulled out for your attention because it really summarizes the distrust from the community for Mr Madden and his outfits based on the reputational issues and the extraordinary number of objections that have emerged. And I've said a few words about why that relationship between a licensee and the community is so important. Your statement of licensing policy overtly invites an applicant to engage with the community, local businesses, local charities, local residents and so forth. There hasn't been any of that because this has swept in as a, it's just a shadow licence, nothing to see here. And it's transmogrified into something else that has completely bypassed all of that community engagement. And what you have ended up with is this hostility and this rejection of the potential incoming operator, which is no good for anybody. And I make no bones about reiterating, no good for your economy. From objection 144, you start to get the objections from the local businesses and the charities in particular, and they are most put out by the lack of engagement with them. Objection 144, Scotis Works, talking about vulnerable members of the community. Objection 149, concerns about women. Objection 153, Vicky Morris, concerns about women. LGBTQ plus concerns. And this engages your public sector equality duty, which I lay firmly on the table because that is a legal requirement for you to take into account. When any decision that you are likely to make has a possibility of impacting negatively particularly, but in any way upon those with protected characteristics, it must overtly be part of your decision making duty to consider that impact and to reflect it in the way that you decide to go. And I make that an overt part of these proceedings and would expect it to be dealt with overtly. Objection 155 and 156 are public sector equality duty considerations. And it's important under the Equality Act to consider how this licence would potentially affect those with those protected characteristics as applied for specifically without the sorts of conditions that you would need. I'm now only just going to touch upon the positive references and Mr Daryl Butterworth's considerations and then I'm done. So bundle two, you have the material in support of Mr Madden. Amy Lamay is the London Knight Zar. She has no extrinsic knowledge of Bristol, Newcastle or Sheffield. She's London centric and in her commendation, she makes no reference to the review of Electric Brixton or the very concerning stabbing. The Lambeth Council review dates to 2015, which one might have thought would be scraping the barrel somewhat. Daniel Davis, the next one, is the chairman of the Institute of Licensing. I know him very well. There's no date on his letter. He clearly doesn't know what's going on at Brixton and he clearly didn't write this letter himself. Neither did Mike Kill. And I'll tell you why I say that. Both of those letters are in similar language, similar but different. But when you read them, reflect on that. Both of the letters refer to Mr Madden taking over in 2011. He didn't. It's 2015. The review at Brixton Electric was in May of 2015 and the previous owners left under a cloud in October of 2015. So somehow a typo or an inaccuracy has gone in the same terms into both letters and neither of the signatories to the letters knew it was wrong or picked up on it. But the killer is this, if you look at Mike Kill's letter on page 44, you will go down almost to the end and then you'll see in some square brackets, insert your contact information here. And somebody forgot to take it out. So Mike Kill's recommendation letter was written for him and put under his nose for his signature and he didn't realise that it was wrong and he didn't bother to put in his contact details. So I ask you to take that into account when you're looking at weight as well. I'll say this, of the stabbing at Electric Brixton in 2019, Dan Davis praises Mr Madden for being able to prevent the disruption to his reputation, which I would not have thought would be the priority in that situation. The Hamlin's letter was clearly written on Mr Madden's instruction. It's super aggressive. Mr Mills responded. We have the response if anybody cares, but Mr Madden obviously also has the response but didn't see fit to include it. Hamlin's letter was full of threats and then it goes quiet and nothing further was said or done about it and Hamlin's backed off, presumably because they realised it was going nowhere. Incidentally, Mr Madden's statement is replete with references to correspondence with Mr Mills that Mr Mills never responded to. That is refuted. That is not true. It's not particularly relevant to you. If you did think it was relevant, that could be demonstrated to you. Some of the business credentials in there also hotly refuted, but the preponderance of that will come out in the course of the landlord and tenant proceedings. So finally then, Daryl Butterworth is wheeled out to do one night's observation at each of Mr Madden's premises to reassure you that they are jolly well-run premises really. What is interesting though, is that even on those snapshot visits, which tell you precious little about the ongoing record and behaviour at those premises, Mr Butterworth has to concede that the premises are not compliant with their licences. Two out of three are not compliant with their licences. Brixton Electric, page 60, on examination, had no authorisation from a premises licence holder to those serving alcohol. That's a no-no. That's a requirement under the Act. So that's not just a minor hiccup, like not putting up a sign about you're going to get searched or please note the CCTV on. That's fundamental. That's licensing ABC. And on a compliance visit, which was intended to be presented to you to show the marvellous credentials of Mr Madden, it was being breached. That's wrong. I don't suppose Amy Lamay, Dan Davis or Mike Kill would be very impressed if they knew about that. I'd like you to note that Mr Butterworth sugarcoats his statement. So if you do a cross-reference between his visit reports and his compliance reports, which are appended at the end, and then you look and see what's said in the statement, the statement cuts out the nasty bits. That's not very impressive. Wouldn't have expected an ex-inspector to do that, but he does. So I'll give you an example. The report that he provides for SWX in Bristol at 1930 hours says, the ID scanners are out, but they're not used. And at page 77, Mr Butterworth calls it a concern. They should have been used. Page, excuse me, page 57, paragraph 30 and 31 of his statement, he leaves that bit out. Doesn't draw attention to that. He doesn't mention that caps were still being worn, which thwarts the search and the CCTV recognition policy. He says that the ID scanner out was, but was not used. It's wrong. The report makes it plain that the ID scanner went out initially and was being used appropriately initially and then the staff stopped bothering to use it. That's what happened and that's what the reports make very, very clear. And that's the concern in the context of themes about underage laxity, sex attacks, IDing offenders and so forth. And that's why Mr Butterworth raised it as a concern. Page 67, NX in Newcastle, he found drug use. Swabs were positive. That's the one with the challenge 21 policy only. And page 71 in Brixton, he noted in the assessment of drunkenness that patrons were unsteady on their feet. And at page 40, page 60, he says, the part that I've referenced about finding incidents in the objections hard to accept. Well, ultimately his opinions are irrelevant and it is your opinions alone which count as to whether you think that the incidents and the reviews and the references that have been put before you plentifully by the objectors are of relevance or not. But clearly, these things are not being made up in terms of the incidents that have occurred. And Mr Butterworth, page 60, paragraph 49, brushes over it, referring to the worst thing that patrons might do as a stray shout, which is rather uter-. worst thing that patrons might do as a stray shout, which is rather utopian for such an experienced officer. So there you have it. Rather unusually, I conclude by saying that it wouldn't just be wrong to grant this licence as applied for in the terms of hope and glory and in the terms of appealability. It would be unlawful, which is JR language, public law language. There are various elements of this application, including the invitation to you to grant it to nobody with no DPS and to grant it on a falsity, which you are currently being invited to do, which would be ultra-viruses. It would be an unlawful thing to do and it is not for me or indeed for the committee to correct that. All of that weight goes on the applicant and it is very disappointing that they haven't spotted any of this.
Thank you. That's really helpful and I'm sure we'll keep Malcolm very busy when we eventually get into private session. I think with respect for the other people who've come and made an indication to speak, I'll open it up to them first because they've been sat here a while now. So if any of the people who've come and wish to make a statement have something to add to that, and you may well have, then this is your opportunity and we'll just go from right to left, front row to back row. I've got a list of things, list never works. So gentlemen, if you'd like to come and speak to us, much appreciated.
Thank you very much for hearing me. I'm speaking on behalf of the Leadmill staff today. Since I was old enough to have even the most basic understanding of Sheffield's cultural offerings, I have remained in awe of the Leadmill. Its ability to rouse memories and sentiments between three generations of family members over a dinner table, the collective excitement of gathering below the glow of the iconic sign and the intangible sense of community forged within its walls. In present times more than ever, these are not attributes that can be given lightly. Long before I had the opportunity to work at the Leadmill and see firsthand what goes into making it such a special place, I was able to feel it. A gig fair always came with the pretence that you were about to witness another chapter in our city's history and a club night came with the liberty of feeling safe. I was unemployed and claimed a universal credit when I began working at the Leadmill as a promotions assistant in 2021. I had no prior work experience in the CV that didn't necessarily stand out, but I was hired because the management could see how much I cared about Sheffield's musical and therefore cultural heritage. Since then, I've been afforded opportunities to learn and grow in ways that no previous education was able to offer, not just in terms of broadening my skill set, but allowing me to gain confidence in myself with the support of a team that always had my back. The current Leadmill team is a young, driven, endlessly creative collective of minds that aren't here just because it's a job to do, but because we're all completely committed to delivering memories and experiences at the calibre we have grown accustomed to as Leadmill customers. The reason why the cogs keep turning is because we hold each other in the highest regard and have the utmost respect for each other and the people that come through our doors. This hasn't come about because of external training, visiting professionals or micromanagement. It's a wonderfully organic process of people with a shared passion coming together to teach each other what we know. The curation of the staff within the building is a thorough testament to the ethics and values we strive to represent in our conduct, one of the primary reasons I stand proud to be a representative of the Leadmill. Should MVL Properties 2017 Limited be allowed to take our places, there will forever be a sinking feeling in the chest whenever Sheffield's musical that you just mentioned. To reference the Leadmill in past tense for the rest of our lives would mean that money has been successful in speaking louder than Sheffield's independence and cultural livelihood. Previous instance, MVL Properties venues across the UK highlight a disturbing legacy of public safety issues, with the most serious ranging from knife crime in London to sexual assaults at their venue in Bristol. Alongside damning reviews on the player review website Glassdoor that speak of rude management, bad training and how supervisors can be inappropriate, I feel that allowing a licence for this kind of business to operate in the city where I live would be insult to injury on top of losing my job. The initial suggestion on Twitter from Dominic Madden on April first, 2022, that the management may change but the song stays the same, captures the aim of the game with his proposed takeover. With this one statement, it outlines exactly the sort of establishment this building would become, one that perceives a lighted stage as being the defining factor of a venue over the tireless dedication of a team who are only able to sleep knowing we have done what we can to please as many people as possible. In an ideal world, anyone with any doubt about this would spend their day at the Leadmill and see it for themselves. Embedded within the communal spirit of servitude is a camaraderie that uplifts us on a daily basis, something that has been increasingly essential over the last year and a half. So on behalf of myself as a lover of Sheffield's culture and heritage and on behalf of the Leadmill as a devoted employee who has made this place a second home, I would like it known to the committee that I object on the strongest possible terms to MVL Properties Limited 2017 being allowed to operate a venue within this city.
Thank you very much. That's really helpful. And I've just had a telling of, oh, I should have just asked you to also, could you just say your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Fraser Spooner.
Thank you. That's helpful. Thanks ever so much for your presentation. Do you have any of the speakers?
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Dominic Heslop. I'm a Sheffield-bred Jamaican British artist, rapper and socially engaged practitioner. For nearly over a decade, I've worked on a wide range of creative community projects with a focus on building creative platforms for young people to boost self-esteem, self-belief, influencing positive life paths. Due to a lack of resources, limited youth provisions and access to creative spaces, several communities have been deprived, which permits more of the same decline. To tackle this, in 2017, I founded Slam Bars, which is a music, artist development and live performance community interest company for young urban lyricists aged between fourteen and twenty-five, based in Sheffield. We are passionate about supporting young people that have expressed the need and appetite for safe spaces where they can pursue their creative and artist passions through music whilst networking with other creatives, communities, industry professionals and renowned venues like never before. Many of the young people we have engaged with are from precarious backgrounds, immersed in trauma, child exploitation and serious youth violence. We know that creating safe, accessible, diverse, supportive and consistent spaces for young people has positive outcomes for their mental, social and creative development. In my experience, music is an expressive art that galvanises people universally. Art is also a reflective process which allows us to therapeutically overcome many aspects of life, especially trauma. The young people we engage with flourish in this freely expressive environment, many of which have progressed to taking their artistic endeavours more seriously and making positive life paths for themselves. The Leadmill have directly supported our community endeavours that safeguard and encourage live performance opportunities for seldom heard young people. The Leadmill is an integral part in our nurturing relationship between community, young people, culture and industry. Their influence has enabled more creative opportunities for young people that would not ordinarily have the access. At-risk young people and musicians are in a space to shape new pathways when they can flourish in such a mentoring, industry-supporting opportunities, employment and higher education. The Leadmill acts as a web of connectivity between other organisations across the city which enables us to signpost further opportunities for at-risk young people. They have helped us to embrace diversity, which enriches cultural engagement and they have provided a safe and nurturing environment for young people that they can call their The Leadmill is a trusted and reputable operator with a proven track of forty-three years. From top to bottom, the staff, they clearly understand the importance of community cohesion, cultural business and they are renowned for staging some of the world's most iconic artists. There is no evidence that the Electric Group has any interest or is capable of nurturing communities and young people. The well-documented instances of violence, failure to safeguard young people, prevention of crime and disorder have been breached on numerous occasions, leading to serious acts of lawlessness. As a community organisation, our young people, attendees, audience and staff would not be safe in that environment that the landlord had currently and still operates via his business nightclubs. The below evidence is clearly demonstrating a venue which poses life-threatening outcomes, which again is not safe for our community of Sheffield and our young people. I reiterate, we cannot be assured or trust that Mr Madden or his management are the right candidates to safeguard our community due to the sheer volume of instances that have resulted in criminality or injury at their other venues. The repercussions of such could cause issues, including police time, public safety. Creative organisations would lose a relationship and access to a safe cultural space, such as the Leadmill, which we've been proud to call our own for half a century. Lack of creative provisions for young people ultimately results in criminality. So I ask to please, consistent of my objection today, as I speak for many services, organisations and young people that feel the same way as we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brian Toplin. I'm objected to this licence today on the prevention of crime and disorder, but I think it's also worth mentioning the protection of children from harm as well, with there being no conditions on the licence in regards to age checks, challenge twenty-one or challenge twenty-five. But there is also a lot that the Leadmill does with young people, as we've just heard. I've seen youth orchestras there. What would the licence do to protect these things and these people from this harm, especially with what the current operators have been doing elsewhere and the police incidents and the stabbings and the sexual assaults and the rapes that have happened in the venues that Mr Madden currently operates? I'm a licensee holder as well myself. I've got personal licence and I'm a DPS designated premises supervisor at a music venue within Sheffield at the Dorothy Pax. I'd find it insulting to those of us who operate safely with customers' safety, the neighbours' safety, everybody's safety in mind. I'd find it hard to continue a working relationship with another venue in Sheffield that doesn't do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sam Holland. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm director of Migration Matters Festival, the UK's largest refugee week festival, which has been an annual celebration in Sheffield since 2016, welcoming thousands of audience members, including refugees and asylum seekers in the city. Over the last few years, we have partnered with the team at the Leadmill to deliver a number of meaningful events which have positively impacted the multicultural and diverse communities across the city. Their team have supported the values of the festival and have worked tirelessly to make sure that our audience members feel safe and secure. My objection to the premise, the licence is grounded in serious concerns about possible risk to public safety, given an awful track record of keeping people safe in their venues. Incidences have been well mentioned today. As an organisation which supports some of the most vulnerable members of our community, I would not feel comfortable organising events or encouraging people to use the Leadmill should this licence be granted. Over the years, I've worked with countless organisations in the refugee and asylum support sector in order to best serve refugees, new arrivals to the city and people who have migrated to Sheffield from across the world. In that time, it had been very clear how important it is to have a welcoming and safe environment in our cultural and arts buildings. The fact that the licensed applicants of managed buildings or audience members have complained of being subject to racism, humiliated and not feeling welcome is very alarming. I fear this would have a knock-on effect for the wider community and damaged trust in the venue as well as the council if this licence is granted. It tarnishes our brilliant city's reputation and for one of the country's best-loved venues to be in the wrong hands would have a grave impact on our arts and cultural scene, as well as the vulnerable audience members who want to access those buildings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Claire Brown. I'm here representing Franz von Schotter, who submitted a complaint detailing concerns of public safety issues again regarding the incidents already mentioned at the other MVL properties. I would also like to express my concerns as a parent and a friend of other parents whose children access the Leadmill in collaboration with charitable youth groups and educational groups that are run by the Sheffield Music School that Franz is a mentor for. I can honestly say the work done to create a safe environment and sense of belonging for our children is evident. The Leadmill is more than just a nightclub, it's also a community venue providing a safe space for alternative provision for our young people. This aspect of the Leadmill provides aspirations and works to tackle knife crime and antisocial behaviour by providing a safe space, bringing communities together and working as an extended family. These young people may go on to then become future staff, customers and even performers. The Leadmill directly works to support the agenda of race equality commissions, recommendations by educating future generations, fostering inclusive communities and wellbeing, supporting One Sheffield in Community, Life and Confidence and of course, celebrating Sheffield through culture and music. One of the things I'm proud of for Sheffield City Council is the importance it puts place on children and young people, something I saw so clearly when I used to work at the council first at Children's Centre. Sheffield is so unique in that our leaders put our children at the heart of our council and our city. It's the children and young people at the centre of this that as a parent I feel is important. I want my children to feel a sense of belonging and safety, a reduction of crime through education. I don't want the Leadmill to become just another nightclub and have the issues Franz has raised concerns about. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
My name's Lucas Watts. I'm a resident in Sheffield and I'm a Leadmill supporter. My objection is number six on page two hundred and twenty. It's only a short objection, but it just gets to the point and that's just what I want to reiterate today, that I wouldn't want MVL Properties to run a venue in Sheffield, certainly not the Leadmill, because of the problems of crime and disorder in their other venues and the other safety things that we've heard about today. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Rob Unwin. I'm a next-door neighbour to the Leadmill and I'm speaking on behalf of Clive Beljean, who's a colleague of mine, objection number one five six, but also Ethical Property Company, who own Scotia Works and their objection is number one four four. Just like to say that in its current iteration, Scotia Works was refurbished and established in 2003 and in all that time, it's been privileged to be next-door neighbours to the Leadmill. They've been excellent neighbours and we've heard about their community-focused activities. They held special accessible events for young people, many different groups. My wall adjoins the Leadmill. I hear when they do sound checks and obviously I adapt to that, that's fine. We see the big queues as we come out, if we come out late, if working late from a management meeting or whatever, there are big long queues. Never any problems. Sometimes there's a little bit of litter the following morning, but we've got a good relationship with them. Those sort of problems get sorted out. Scotia Works, run by Ethical Property Company, has a number of tenants who run services for extremely vulnerable people. We're talking about domestic violence, rape crisis. We ourselves, a couple of organisations I work with, work at, often have schoolchildren coming during the daytime to Scotia Works to use the facilities. This licence, the shadow licence which Sarah Clover was referring to, is of huge concern to us. I mean, it's a 24/7 licence. As people have said before, the Leadmill have earned a reputation, they've earned the trust of local people, the local community. They've got this kind of licence and it's adjusted over time, as Sarah mentioned. To have new people coming in who we don't know, who've not talked to us, they've made no attempt to consult with the local community, as far as I'm aware, coupled with their reputation of overselling tickets... coupled with their reputation of overselling tickets, not having a designated premises supervisor, inadequate additional conditions. This is of huge concern to me and the other tenants and the other neighbours as well. I mean, just across the way, there's Unite Students, lots of, many, many student flats, often housing young people away from home for the first time, many overseas students who may not be all that confident about encountering big crowds of people and so on. This licence, this 24/7 licence means potentially, there could be contact between people unruly crowded who are not being properly supervised and some extremely vulnerable people. So it's a very great concern. I think I've covered what I want to say, just really to emphasise that this shadow licence is not fit for purpose and it should be rejected. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, can you hear me? Okay, my name's Dr Peter Prowse, I'm a retired academic. I just want to make two points clear. I've got nothing to do with the Lead Mill management, the current management, or Mr Mills or anybody at all. But I would like to say one thing. I've worked for the last 30 years on economic regeneration and I've worked in a number of cities around the UK and around the world. I want to make one point, that this local economy business, which is a running business, employing 80 people minima with more people for events management, is very successful. Used as case studies, it's used as case studies for lots of things across the UK. I've got no idea what happened with all the issues of the legal parts of the lease, but I would like to say that this is a successful business. My points over the last 30 years as a customer and also taking students in when I was a tutor, was it was one of the safest places I've been to. I've been to some of the venues in London many, many years ago before Mr Madden took them over and they were frenetic, I've got to tell you, and some places still are. I've also been to the Hacienda many, many years ago and lots of other places. You'll find that the crowd management here, the current crowd management and the way that events are done in the Lead Mill is really good. The staff, the employee are exemplary at the door. The security people are wonderful. I had my 60th birthday party, took my family there on a Saturday night and people of all ages went, from obviously above the legal sort of age to my 90-year-old father-in-law and they had a great time. They couldn't have been nicer to us and they're very, very accommodating. That's the sort of thing that I think is very unique in the Lead Mill, that is really, really important, that we need to keep hold of in this city. Thank you very much indeed for listening, thank you.
Thank you. Can you move on to the second row, we're in the same order?
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. It's daunting being this close, jeez. I want to start by saying that you all have my sympathy for this decision of this licence application. As this wonderfully eloquent woman pointed out, the shadow licence seems to be some sort of sham or a ruse. It seems to me to be like one of a thousand cuts in a way of killing the Lead Mill. I'm worried that no matter which way you decide on this today, you're making the wrong decision in a way. If you grant the owners, Mr Madden, as I've termed him in this, a vulture capitalist, the licence today, they pose a credible danger to the area with these countless stories of drug abuse, stabbings, assault, racism from venues run by the applicant, as well as destroying an intrinsic part of Sheffield culture. I know we're meant to keep to the topics here and like the conditions, so I'd like to, you know, take a sort of synonym look at public safety. Like what is public safety other than all of us physically? It's our culture, it's our community, it's our sense of self, bound together in a common spirit. And what is safety? Well, that's, you know, keeping something as it is, keeping it as the Lead Mill and not killing it and giving it to this guy. Sorry, my phone died, I decided to go old-school with these notes. I'm also worried that if you decide against the Lead Mill today, you're playing into Mr Madden's hands. It's my belief that they don't really care about running venues, as you can see from all the evidence of what they do. And that at some point, you know, he'll just kind of throw in the towel and say, "Well, you know, I tried and I tried to get a licence, but they turned me down, so I had to just demolish the whole thing. I tore the Lead Mill out and I built it into something like student accommodation." I reckon that would be what would happen. Economically speaking as well, it's not just a grassroots venue for music, but for small businesses. I'm one of the businesses that rents space above the Lead Mill, one of countless tenants who've held the same space and moved on to bigger and better venues in Sheffield up in bigger and more useful things to the, you know, the local economy. And if you get rid of the Lead Mill, you get rid of that opportunity for all of us starters, our entrepreneurs, to do the same thing. And finally, I'd like to, just something I noticed when I came in, I don't know if I noticed for this, but above and behind you, there's this lovely mural and there's a hammer and tongs up here, which are symbols of strength and the creativity of this city. The Lead Mill does have its big neon red sign, which everyone knows is iconic, but a smaller mural that not a lot of people seem to notice hangs above the doors and above those are two figures and they bear a standing bass and a trumpet and music notes flowing around. I'd like to ask Mr Madden what he'd put on display. Would it be a hand holding a dripping knife, a bag of drugs, something like that? That's what I'd imagine. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, could you just confirm your name please, actually? Thank you, Matthew.
Hiya, my name's Jo Owens, I'm a resident of Sheffield for the last 40 years. Grew up in Sheffield and when I was old enough to go out, we always went to the Lead Mill. We tried the other clubs, but the Lead Mill was the place that was safe and my parents were happy for me to attend there. Then over the last 10 years or so, we've been going to Lead Mill off-shot of Tramline's festival. We've taken our children there, my son's happily wearing his Lead Mill hoodie at school today and when he turns 18, I will confidently let him go for a night out at the Lead Mill. However, if this takeover does happen, he will not be attending the new nightclub or whatever. It becomes looking at the track record that Mr Maddox has got already. So I speak on behalf of the parents, that they want to keep their children safe and it's quite a scary world out there and the Lead Mill is a safe place that we've got. And also from a business point of view, if it's a 24-hour licence, I currently work at the funeral home just around the corner from the Lead Mill. We have funerals leading out all through the day. If we've got queues of people, it's not a nice thing attending a funeral and if you've got to go past the hearse with rowdy people about to attend a day event, it's not appropriate and it's not what the city wants. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's John Cohen, objection 143, I think it is. I'd just like to thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak today. Should make it clear, I've got no direct connection with either of the parties in this affair. I'm here as a gig-goer and a music lover and I've been going to Lead Mill for as long as I can remember, since records, since music used to be on records years and years ago. And obviously I became aware of the campaign via the social media, one thing or another, and I began to look into myself and many of the things that I've found out. I found really worrying about the future of this institution in Sheffield, particularly. I'm even more worried about it today, having found out from a learned friend about the details of the 24-hour licence, which I didn't previously understand. One of the things that jumped out at me, I'm very mindful, I won't just repeat what I've put in my objection, as you've already read them. When they changed the O2 venue to the NX nightclub in Newcastle, completely changed what the venue were providing, the sort of venue that it were. There were huge objections from across Newcastle, the residents groups, the councillors, democratic elected members like yourselves, the police, the licensing committee, everything. And I just think that's really worrying, that we're going to go from somewhere that's got a reputation for putting on fantastic music, all the community work that people have attested to, to somewhere that could be changed out of all recognition and that could bring with it all the problems that we've discussed about the places that we've seen happening in London and things like that. I worked in the industry for some time, very similar venues to Lead Mill. So I've seen hands-on what it's like to be working in difficult venues and one thing or another and the one thing that I always think about the Lead Mill, that I always recommend it to people, is apart from the quality of the music and the staff and everything, it's that you feel safe there and obviously many other people have attested to that as well. So it's with that in mind, I would, as a gig-goer, as a Sheffield person, would hopefully say that you'd see fit to object to this licence today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Stephen Blakely. I run a business based in Sheffield that specialises in governance, safeguarding, community development. We work with government agencies, NGOs and companies. Over the years, I've assessed and done due diligence on many hundreds of organisations for these types of issues. So I speak from this perspective when I'm talking about the application and the objections that have been made around it. My main concerns around the application are the idea that replacing the Lead Mill with another club is not risky. In my opinion and, you know, my advice to any organisation looking at this would be that you need to consider this from the fresh grounds. Lead Mill has worked over a very long time, decades, to build relationships with the community and we've heard about some of the things, the engagement with young people, with vulnerable people. These are all really important and they're not just good deeds that the Lead Mill does. These are risk mitigation measures and they're really essential. Understanding and engaging with the community is a significantly critical part of any risk mitigation strategy that is undertaken by these kinds of venues, it's essential. I would be surprised if even a brand-new, unknown organisation would get a licence in the location that the Lead Mill is located in, near residential accommodation with very little other evening entertainment nightlife around. The street is quite quiet, there's not anyone else to look out for you there. So it's already a high-risk location. And adding to that, the knowledge of many of the things that have taken place in the organisation that is looking to achieve this licence, not only is it risky in itself, but there's a lot of red flags that suggest that, you know, the risk is extremely high. So granting this licence looks likely to perpetuate the repeated incidents of violence and concerning behaviour that have taken place. And to make that decision would be, in my view, a big, big risk. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other speakers from the floor then firstly, can I thank you very much for giving up your time to come here today? But also, you know, I don't think we're quite as scary as we look even on a Monday morning, but I know it can be quite daunting, standing up and speaking in this chamber and to have spoken so concisely, so coherently and to have given us that many different perspectives rather than just coming up and saying the same thing is really helpful, so I appreciate that. I'm now going to open this up to questions. I suspect much of what's being said raises questions that we'll have for the applicant rather than for yourselves. But we'll start with the committee and we'll open this up to questions. So Henry, would you like to start us off on questions?
A quick starter for 10. You referenced an objection from Sasha Lord, were you aware that this has been removed?
I wasn't, it was in the pack that I was given.
Can we get confirmation from licensing officers on that?
It's not been shared, I don't think. Sorry? So we shouldn't actually, as we've not shared it, then we shouldn't really take any account of that, I don't think at this stage, but...
If I may, just an observation about that, all that would go to is the political tension that obviously exists between a chairman of an organisation and a chief executive. What is clear is that the emotional direction of Mr Lord was set out in his objection and his reasons for wishing to take it off the table are less likely to be emotional and more likely to be political.
Yeah, first I just want to reiterate what David said. I know how daunting it is to come in here and speak, so well done everybody. I know it's a massive thing to do and you did really, really well. I don't know if my question's for officers, it's about whether there's been any complaints or incidents at the Lead Mill in the last five-plus years. So I just wonder if you could give me some reassurance around that?
Thank you, councillor. Just to confirm that the five years I've worked as a licensing enforcement officer, I've never needed to attend the Lead Mill.
Just a couple of things from me. I think very much throughout your presentation, you picked up a lot of things in the application. Sort of pull that to bits quite a bit. But how much is it the application as opposed to the applicant? What's the sort of combination? Had this applicant put in a better phrased application, would you have still been opposed to it?
I would, but as a lawyer, I have to work on brass tacks and you can only grant the application that is in front of you, subject to your amendment. It's possible for any applicant to offer you amendments. You'd expect that to be done before the middle of a hearing, but it's a possibility. It's possible for you to amend applications, but I've made the point a couple of times now, why would you? It's not your job to design the appropriate licence for Mr Madden, it's for Mr Madden to put forward an appropriate licence to you. Those are my baselines. On top of that, it will be abundantly clear that there are fundamental objections anyway to Mr Madden and the way he operates premises, which is evidenced by the operation of the other premises, which is all that we have to go on. So the answer to your question is yes and yes. I fundamentally object to the brass tacks of this application in pure legal terms. Sitting over the top of that, on behalf of the Lead Mill, we would object to Mr Madden anyway. Even if the application were perfect in its technical terms, the objection would still stand for the subsidiary reasons that we've given.
Thank you. And just the other thing from me. We had never had calls to review the Lead Mill licence, so when we saw it with these papers, it was quite a surprise to see the lack of conditions on there, given the scope of the licence. And I just wondered, in your experience, would such a licence be common in any way? And if it is, do you know of any, with so few conditions on, that would operate in such a problem-free way?
It's a unicorn, aka a miracle. I have no idea how the Lead Mill ever ended up with this licence, even back in the day. I can only assume that it was granted very early doors. That is true, it's been operating forever, so it will have been, I'll be corrected if I'm wrong, it will have been grandfathered over. Everybody was furtling around trying to figure out the new licensing act 2003. Came up with some conditions, because that's what you did and then thereafter, it's remained in the hands of the same trustworthy caretaker who's never given any cause for any enforcement officer to question it. The chances of any licence like this being granted in these terms today, I can confidently say with 30 years in the business, is south of nil, absolutely not a chance. And that's why in the first representation, even for a shadow licence... representation, even for a shadow licence, for somebody who says they want to operate the business, not a chance, absolutely not a cat's chance. And even now, with the conditions that are being put forward by the responsible authorities, it's a smorgasbord of nothing. And in order to get a real flavour of the type of conditions you'd be looking at on a modern licence, you only have to look at the Electric Brixton. That's got the right type of stuff in it, written in the correct type of language. There's a couple of extraneous whatnot in there. But that's the sort of level that you'd be looking at. And most of these premises are done on the basis of event management plans submitted to responsible authorities, agreed in cooperation with and then implemented. Policies across the board, drugs, search, seizure, whatever, policy, policy, policy. You'd have all of these things to be agreed with the responsible authorities, amended where necessary. There's a way of doing this. This isn't it.
Thank you.
Please, yeah. Something like seventy-odd conditions on Electric Brixton. And still, there is stabbing, there are rapes, there is overcrowding. That's with those conditions. How many do you have to put on to get these people to comply with safety, crime and disorder, sexual assault, rapes?
Thank you. That is what this committee has to consider. You would like to ask the interested parties?
No, thank you, Chair.
Licensing officers wish to ask?
The only thing I just wanted to update on was the objection that was withdrawn by Sasha Lord, that was received last night and picked up by officers this morning. So it was all very late. Thank you.
And I wonder if the applicant has any questions?
I don't, thank you. I'm going to deal with it in submissions.
Then we will crack on and we will go over to you to state your case to us today.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the committee, it's always difficult as a lawyer to be perceived to be the bad guy. I quite like trying to be the good guy, but it's very difficult when you've got such an emotional connection to some premises. But I'm going to take you through why I say that this is a correct legal process, why Miss Clover's submissions to you are not right in relation to this shadow licence application. And can I start, please, by just taking you to the bits that she's referred to within the document? And this is always the case, I'm afraid, when you've got completely difference of opinions on either side of a contested hearing. But it's important why I set out why what's been said to you so far is incorrect. So page nineteen, we're criticised for ticking the box, "I'm carrying on or proposing to carry on a business which involves the use of the premises for licensable activities." It's the only one of the boxes that we could tick. So I really don't see how we could be criticised in relation to ticking that box. And certainly my firm undertakes a significant number of shadow licence applications. That box is always ticked before we submit the application. So we then move to page twenty, where we set out at the bottom of the page, so that the responsible authorities understand what the application is, what we're applying for. And you can see there, at the bottom of page twenty, we couldn't have been clearer. This is an application for a shadow licence in the name of the landlord, that's correct. The existing licence is in the name of the tenant, that's correct. We are applying for the shadow licence in exactly the same terms as the existing Leadmill Licence Limited, which is correct. The two licences will not operate at the same time, and the purpose behind the application is not to create an existing licence. Again, that is correct. And then importantly, we will agree to notify you if for any reason the landlord chooses to operate the premises under the shadow licence and not the existing licence. So in Mrs. Clover's written document, she makes a differentiation, or she attempts to make a differentiation, between what is being applied for. Is it a shadow licence? Is it an operating licence? And it's very clearly though, that we are telling your officers, and we're telling you today, that this is an application for a shadow licence, sits on the shelf, as all shadow licences do. If something happens by the operator so that that licence needs to come to life, it can then come to life and become an operating licence. And that is what shadow licences are and what they do. And that is what this shadow licence will do. If you grant it, it will sit on the shelf in my client's name. If he is successful in the litigation at Leeds High Court in relation to the proprietary issues, he will then liaise with your responsible authorities again, bring that licence to life, because it's clearly said within the rep that there will be no consent given to transfer the existing licence. And at that stage, what was a shadow licence will become an operating licence. If Mr. Madden loses his case at the High Court, then the Leadmill will maintain a right to occupy the premises. As it stands at the moment, their lease has come to an end and they're seeking to avoid being removed from the premises. If they're successful at the High Court, then the shadow licence will still do what a shadow licence should do. It will sit on the shelf. And that's exactly the purpose of these licences. And just at the top of page twenty-one, we highlighted again, so that the officers could understand it, that this, and I think this part is accepted between the two lawyers, that the case law suggests that in all of the circumstances, a landlord can apply for that shadow licence. Can I then just ask you to move on to the signature page of the document, which I really, I'm afraid, don't understand my friend's submissions on there, because this is page forty-one. And it says above that, this section should be completed by the applicant unless you answered yes to the question, "Are you the agent acting for the applicant?", which of course we ticked, and of course we signed on behalf of the applicant. Every single application that leaves my office for a new licence or a variation is signed by us on behalf of the applicant. So whilst my friend is trying to create some kind of issues in relation to the validity of this application, that really isn't one that you can add any weight to, because it clearly is the way that the industry works. Now, I'm asking you then to just refer to paragraph 2.3 of your report, which is at page twelve. Don't need to turn it up at the moment. But this is from your licensing officer, which says that a valid application has been accepted. So your licensing officer has seen what's been submitted to them and has accepted this as a valid application. I think it's quite a dangerous tactic when an advocate tells you, "If you grant this licence, it's wrong and you'll lose on appeal. Worse than that, it would be unlawful and you'd lose at the High Court." I think that's symptomatic of the approach that's being taken by the objector in this case. Because then the objector tells you, and I took a note of this, "The police should have put their foot down. They should be here today." So the licensing officer is wrong in accepting this application. The police are wrong in not putting a representation in and being here today, and as are your other responsible authorities. Not only are your responsible authorities wrong if you accept the case of the objector, but the responsible authorities in the other three jurisdictions where Mr. Madden trades are also wrong in that they haven't had an interaction with his premises. I'm going to come on and deal with that very shortly. So I would say to you in clear terms, this is a valid shadow licence application. It was made out to be a shadow licence application. It was assessed by your expert responsible authorities, including your licensing officer, as being valid. I didn't quite fully take a note, but I think it was suggested that the objector then tried to chivvy the police up and say, "Come on, what are you doing? You should be putting a rep into this application," which I have to say I've never heard of before, ever, in my thirty-plus years as a licensing lawyer. And I am significantly surprised that that has happened and has been said to you before the committee today. If there hadn't have been a very strong vocal and impassioned objection to the loss of the Leadmill, and this had been judged on a completely subjective, sorry, an objective test by all parties, we wouldn't have been here today at this stage, because your officers would have accepted it as a valid application. Your responsible authorities would have accepted it as a valid application. And the licence would have been granted under delegated authority. So we then move on to find out that the police were somehow spooked into putting in the representation along with environmental protection and the health protection service. And you can see those proposed conditions of fifty-six and fifty-seven. As is always the case, a responsible operator will look to see what the authorities are wanting. And if he can accept and agree them and try and remove the need for a hearing, because he deems they're appropriate proportionate and he can comply with them, then it's my experience that an operator would always accept those conditions, remove the need for a hearing, and then move forward. So there is nothing to suggest that the process that's been started, commenced and is before you today is wrong in any form. And if you actually refer to the written submissions that Mrs. Clover put before you, I think inadvertently, she makes my case out for needing a shadow licence, because she says in very clear terms that the objects that she represents will never transfer the licence, would never consent to a transfer of the licence. And in all of the circumstances, now owning the freehold of the property, you would expect a responsible person to want to protect his interest by getting a shadow licence. So that if anything happens at the High Court which the premises licence, current premises licence holder doesn't like, then in all of those circumstances, there would be nothing to stop him from frustrating that premises licence. And that's what shadow licences are all about. It's detailed within the case law. It's mentioned in Mrs. Clover's written submissions. And in all of the circumstances, it is right and proper that a responsible property owner would look to protect his interests. So I don't accept the suggestions that this is a defective application. Obviously, that's something that you're going to have to adjudicate on, because we have different legal standing points on that. But I would ask you to prefer my submissions, that there is nothing wrong with this. This is an atypical shadow licence application. In fact, if Mrs. Clover is correct in relation to her submissions, there are a significant number of defective shadow licences around the country, which I would submit can't be right. So we set all of that out from the very outset, and you can see the progress of what then happened. It falls under the licensing process for the objectors to satisfy you against that statutory test that your legal adviser highlighted at the beginning, that this licence shouldn't be granted. And in all of the circumstances, whilst we hear all of the very heartfelt views of those people who don't want to lose the Leadmill, it's important, I think, just to assess where we are as to whether that shadow licence can be granted to sit on the shelf whilst we wait to see what happens at the High Court to Mr. Madden. And what we tried to do, once we saw the level of opposition, was produce documentation to give you some comfort, which is unusual in a shadow licence application, that this premises licence can be granted to this applicant. Now, there's much within the documentation that has been produced on behalf of the objectors, which comes as way of complaints from social media, from online searches about the premises which Mr. Madden currently trades. But it's important to accept from his witness statement, which you can see within the documentation, that he has no issues with any of the responsible authorities where he trades these venues currently. And I'd like to introduce Dominic in to the proceedings at this stage, please. His very brief witness statement, just to give some context of him, is in the additional bundle of pages sixty-two to sixty-four, which it might be helpful just to turn off before. And I don't know what happened. You'll see from the additional bundle, there seems to be a jumbling up of some of the documents. They don't flow in the correct order. This just sits partially between some of Mr. Butterworth's statements. But Dominic, can you just give the committee some understanding of your purchase of the freehold here, what had happened? It's detailed in the report, but if you can just bring that out in your words, please.
Sure. Well, I just wanted to say thank you for giving me some time to talk today. So I think to answer that question properly, I think I probably need to give some context. So I've been in the entertainment arts, music space for over twenty-five years. And I started running a pub theatre in Battersea in South London called The Latchmere, which was a sixty-five-seat space. And we focused on new writing. So I spent my early, formative part of my career basically running spaces which were in the, what we would call the not-for-profit art space. So basically, at that time, we produced a lot of musicals, but mainly new writers. So it was entirely focused on that. And so probably between nineteen ninety-eight and two thousand, two thousand and one, two, three, I was heavily involved in theatre in London. And I was very lucky and I was very successful very early. So I ran The Latchmere, and then I was recruited by a guy called John Reed, who was Elton John's manager for actually twenty-five years. And he is now very famous in all these movies about Elton John as his sort of boyfriend and partner in sort of consigliere. And I went to work for John. And it was a fascinating period of time professionally for me, because we put together a production, a West End production. It was again, a new play called The Graduate, which starred Kathleen Turner. And she kind of famously took her clothes off and caused a kind of sensation in the West End at that time. Because I'd been involved in something which was sort of pretty successful, I then set up on my own. I rented space at the old Vic and I produced a number of plays in the West End, some of which were hits and some of which weren't. But it was a very valuable time and I enjoyed it enormously. And at that time, I was offered a lease on a derelict Frank Machen cinema, which was full of pigeons. And it was actually, ended up being demolished last year after many years. But it was a remarkable building, basically. It was attached to the Elephant and Castle Shopping Centre, and it was called the Coronet Cinema. And it had survived the Blitz, and it had operated as a cinema for many years. And it was completely derelict. It had been squatted. And I was approached by the property company that owned it, because they were concerned that people would get in and cause themselves harm. So I applied and got what was a remarkable licence at that time, against quite a lot of opposition actually, from the police and the local authority. But I raised some money, quite a lot of money at the time, and we refurbished the building. And it was a huge project. And I was completely inexperienced, had absolutely no clue what I was doing, because all I, I was just a theatre producer. I was doing, because all I, I was just a theatre producer. But that project became, it took over my life really. I reopened it in April two thousand and three, and it was a concert space, it was an art space, and it also, by virtue of the fact that we had this amazing licence, we put on a lot of big, basically nightclub, club events too. And we did all kinds of weird and wonderful stuff, so the sort of backstage of Glastonbury, Las Vegas, we did records, it was a very kind of underground scene. But at the same time, we did, it was a touring standard live music venue, and we actually opened with Blur, Primal Scream, and Macy Gray. Anyway, I enjoyed that experience enormously, but I still retained an interest in the theatre. And in fact, I, sure.
Just at that stage, any interaction, negative interaction with any of the responsible authorities?
No, not at all, not at all. I've never, in fact, over twenty-five years, I've never had, and I'm absolutely delighted and proud to say this, and I find it is important to say it, that I have never had, none of my premises have ever been put into review. In fact, I've taken over premises that have been subject to operational difficulties, but I've turned them around, and as you can see hopefully from reading the submissions, we have an outstanding track record of compliance, not withstanding.
Was that not a situation at Brixton? Well, if you move on to Brixton, Brixton's licence was trading as The Fridge was actually under review under its previous.
But I took that over.
Yes, so it wasn't.
They wanted to shut it.
It wasn't under your period when the review happened, you then took on the problem premises.
In fact, in terms of Brixton, The Fridge, which was the previous name of Electric Brixton, had closed due to all kinds of issues surrounding all of the kind of things Sarah, Mrs Clover accuses me of doing today. You know, there were kids getting in, there was drug use, and all the responsible authorities, and in fact, a lot of the, you know, the key stakeholders in Lambeth wanted it shut. And I took it over, and I managed to secure the lease on the building, and persuaded the local authority to sit and wait and judge our operation. And as you can see from the letter from the then leader of the council to Sir Robin Wales, the leader of Newham Council, because I was invited to take another premises in Newham at a pretty much similar time, you know, I was recommended as a, and me and my team as a sort of safe pair of hands, and with a, with a very clear and, you know, a clear agenda of making sure that our premises were actually operated safely and within the terms of the licence.
Thank you. Can we just move on to Newcastle now?
Yeah.
Because Newcastle, and the chronology is detailed in the report, initially very similar circumstances to here in Sheffield, the O2 Academy traded in Newcastle.
Yeah, it went up for auction.
Your company bought the freehold?
Yeah, we bought it, so it was remarkable. Basically, it came up for auction, and Live Nation were busy acquiring Mamma Group, which was another, which was previously called Mean Fiddler, which was a national operator. And it came up at auction, and I found out about it at four o'clock on a Friday afternoon, and the auction was on the Monday morning. So I literally got on a train, went up to Newcastle, saw, bought a ticket for a show at the Academy, walked in, and I looked, and I came back, and I thought, there's no way this, I'll ever be able to secure the freehold of this building, because it's such an important, valuable building. I mean, it's the O2 Academy. And also, it was nine hundred thousand pounds, which was incredibly cheap for something so valuable. Well, anyway, went to the auction, there was nobody there. Couldn't believe it. So I got my chequebook out, wrote a deposit, paid the auctioneer, and sort of went home in a daze and thought, I just can't believe this has happened.
So having bought the freehold at Newcastle, what happened with your relationship with the operator that was at the venue, whose lease was coming to an end?
Well, to be honest, it's an outstanding relationship. I remember having lunch with the property director of Academy Music Group. Academy is a national, is a major corporate organisation, but it's grown over the years, and they're an outstanding operator, and in fact, they've just got, they just managed to persuade Lambeth Council to regain their licence for the Brixton Academy, which is very close to us in Brixton. So we came to agreement with Academy. They obviously didn't want to relinquish their management of the building, but we were, just to give you the context of why we kind of decided to do this project, was that Electric had become very, very successful, and it had a real traction behind it in terms of the kind of artists that wanted to play it. We were open sort of three hundred times a year. And I was offered SWX, which was a high street nightclub doing phone parties, and it was then operating called Syndicate. And I looked at it, it was a, again, Mrs Clover will know this, and it was a heavily-conditioned licence, and it had a terrible track record, and it had been, that, under previous management, that licence had been subjected to review, and I think, Paddy, you represented the then operator. But my vision for it was to take what was ostensibly a, you know, a wonderful ballroom in a city centre, which was held on the long lease, but turn it into a live music venue. And so we went in, we acquired it, we invested in it, and we opened it up for live, and it suddenly became this, again, very successful live space, and we were doing a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty concerts a year there now. But, you know, that gave me confidence as an operator, that there is an opportunity in the UK. At the moment, there's just, well, three, four years ago, there was just the O2 circuit, the Academy circuit, at a two thousand capacity level. And why, I kind of identified that there was an opportunity for independent venues across the UK, and that the SWX ballroom effectively in Bristol was a perfect space, because it was eleven hundred tickets. And so, you know, I acquired the freehold of the Newcastle property, but we ended up in agreement with Academy Group.
Let's move on a little bit. So you acquired the freehold, the lease was coming to an end with the operator, and they were extended slightly, but then no issues like that had been in relation to the lead mill.
No, not at all.
They accepted that their time was up and they were to move out of the venue.
Yep.
We then approached all of the responsible authorities, because you wanted to spend a huge amount of money on the fabric of the business and the building, including a roof terrace and making the place better, but you also wanted longer hours at the premises. And that premises sits in the heart of Newcastle's making that application to get the longer hours even in their stress area.
Well, at the beginning, it was, when I first met the responsible authorities, they were interested and sceptical. But we went in and we did a huge refurbishment of the building, which was required, and I put in an application, and in fact, it was attacked. It was attacked by Mr Mills, actually.
So just for the committee's purposes, at pages twenty-six to forty-three of the additional pack, is the evidence that the current objector sought to rely on in objecting to your application in Newcastle?
Yes.
Where he has no interest whatsoever?
Yeah.
To try and frustrate your.
And we managed to.
I would just like to point out to the committees, we've submitted that documentation to you, because that documentation is replicated in your pack today along with other information in an attempt to persuade you that my client isn't a fit and proper person to hold this licence. What Newcastle quite correctly did when they saw that, because it's, the vast majority of it is from searches on the internet, it's not substantiated, it's not evidenced, and none of the responsible authorities had issues with that information. Newcastle quite correctly disregarded that information, even though they'd been provided with it. And I'm going to make submissions in relation to this aspect in this case too.
What point of order, please, through you, Chair, with your agreement? May I? Thank you. One may amplify one's submissions and representations, this is completely new evidence coming from Mr Wur, doesn't emanate from Mr Madden. First time I've heard anything about any evidence that was submitted to a Newcastle committee. I'm ambushed, I can't deal with it, it's not an appropriate thing to do.
If I could just come back on the fact, it was supplied in line with the hearing regulations for this matter, it's replicated.
Through you, Chair, repeating it compounds the fault.
I will seek legal advice on this. I was distracted, because I have been circulated with it, I'm not sure why other people weren't that circulated with it.
Perhaps Mr Wur can clarify which documents he's referring to. Sorry, which documents? Sorry, these are the documents at pages twenty-six to forty-three in the additional pack of documents which were provided for today's hearing. They were, I think, circulated and put on the public website. I was presuming that all parties had access to those documents, because they were certainly published in time for this hearing.
Just to be clear, Chair, there's no issue with the documents, they are a repetition of documents that are elsewhere in the bundle. What I'm taking objection to is Mr Wur is now filling us in to say they were submitted to another committee on another day, they were submitted by a particular person, he's pointing the finger at Mr Mills, they were particularly submitted for a particular purpose, mischief-making, and I'm saying all of those assertions are brand-new evidence coming out of Mr Wur's mouth right now, not canvassed anywhere else in the bundle, that's a Regulation eighteen point, and I object.
Well, I'll come back to the point, they are clearly disclosed. I'm describing them, I think that the point doesn't hold water that Miss Clover, Mrs Clover is making. They're clear repetition of what's in here, and I can make submissions on those documents.
I'd need to take instructions, wouldn't I?
It's something we'll come back to, Chair, but if Mr Wur's moving on at the moment, then so be it.
Thank you. So in relation to what happened in Newcastle, the application was granted, notwithstanding that Mr Mills put a rep into it. We then make an application, having traded for some time, which, to extend and vary the applicant licence, which has also been granted. So what I'm trying to establish to you as a committee is whilst Mrs Clover is suggesting to you that the police have dropped the ball here, and they've dropped the ball in Newcastle, and they've dropped the ball in Brixton, and they've dropped the ball in Bristol, there's been a continuing level of application that's been taking place in all of those locations, and all of the responsible authorities are very comfortable that Mr Madden operates his mixed-use live music and nightclub venues in a way that promotes the licensing objectives. I think you say in your statement, you've never had negative interaction with the responsible authorities?
Never.
And you've never had a review of any of your premises licences?
No.
And we've just been granted a three AM extension to weekday hours in Newcastle against our own policy as an ex, what was the expression? It was a.
It's indistresser.
Chair, one of the other documents that we've submitted as a result of that is the letter at pages twenty-two to twenty-five from Hamlin's solicitors, because that really just highlights the nature of the breakdown of the relationship between my client and the lead objector in this case, because they've had to be warned that their behaviour, and that may again now resurrect because of the behaviour in this hearing, could lead to, excuse me, an action being taken in defamation. And those are clearly important considerations for you to understand why, when it says in the objection letter that they wouldn't consent to a transfer, that it's absolutely imperative that Mr Madden makes the application for the shadow licence that's here before you today. Now, I think we've dealt with everything that's in your statement, is there anything else that you'd wish to add? Perhaps it would be useful at this stage just to refer to the references which have been put into the documentation. Page seventeen, we have the documentation that's, again, this is in the additional package, page seventeen from Amy Lemay, who is the night-time czar for London. She's referring to the success and the cultural benefit that your premises bring in Brixton, yes?
That's right. I mean, Amy has been associated in London, I mean, she ran the Royal Vauxhall Tavern, she was an operator herself for many years, and when Sadiq Khan was looking to develop a much more progressive and proactive strategy to protect the late-night sector and cultural venues in London, he approached her, and she's been successful in that role very much. And, you know, she's been, she's fully aware of the type of operation that we have. I mean, basically, Electric Brixton is a late-night space, but it's an event space, it's also a concert hall. So it's a very varied programme. Just going to be very clear about something, because, you know, there's been a lot of attention about me as a person and all this kind of stuff, not helped, I must say, by the vigour of the Save the Lead Mill campaign. It's got a little bit toxic recently. But, you know, if you look objectively at the programming policy of Electric Brixton, which is entirely different to the programming policy of SWX, and yet again, entirely different to the programming policy of NX in Newcastle, all of these venues are programmed differently. They are curated, we have a, I mean, the one commonality is that they actually are all concert venues, which are enormously well-respected by the music industry and the, you know, people, the communities in which they serve. But, you know, Electric Brixton is our flagship really, because it is, it really does punch above its weight in terms of the artists that play there. And I must say, actually, I think probably one of the best gigs we actually had was recently, we did a fundraiser for a Ukrainian charity, and Bono appeared with U2, which was pretty amazing.
And I think that's reflected in the letter that you've produced, albeit of some time ago, from the leader of council at Lambeth when you were looking in Newham to take premises. We've also produced to you a letters of commendation that come from Daniel Davis, the Chair of the IOL at page twenty, and also from Mr Kill from the NTIA at page forty-four. I'm unsure as to the submissions that have been made by Mrs Clover in relation to those references. We all know who these people are, they are people who do not put their names to things to support issues before licensing some committees, unless, one, they believe in what's happening, and, two, they believe in the applicant. So what I would say is, those letters of commendation have been made very readily available for these proceedings, and I really don't understand the submissions that have been made about those references. Page fifty-one, the final reference that we produced is from Carly Heath, who is the Nighttime Economy Advisor in Bristol. Again, we wouldn't be getting that level of commendation on the back of what the responsible authorities are comfortable with unless this was an operator of the most significant level of compliance. Now, I'm just going to ask you to touch upon finally the volumous documentation that's been produced to suggest that this licence shouldn't be granted because you wouldn't promote the licensing objectives. And a lot of that comes from Google reviews, research pieces. Can you just touch upon what that information that comes, I mean, some of it is from incidents that happened at Brixton before.
Well, I think what's quite important to add is that there's a lot of speculation here. I mean, basically, the Save the Lead Mill campaign has gone online and copied and pasted media reports from the Bristol Post and other media outlets. There's no basis of fact there. In fact, I went back through my notes, and I asked my ops team to pull together reports specifically in Bristol. And in fact, you know, there were a number of quite sort of serious allegations there. The first was, and in fact, I checked the StopMadden.com website, which funnily enough has recently been taken down. But anyway, there were a number of allegations. The first was relating to an allegation of cannabis, the first was in relation to cannabis. And I drilled into that, and I looked at the reports, and in fact, in that case, the allegation that, as presented on the website or in the news article, was that the police had attended the premises and effectively, you know, it was, the dot, dot, dot in terms was, the dot-dot-dot in terms of how the information was presented, was that there was a young man dealing drugs of cannabis in the premises. Now, the real position is that our door staff at entry of the premises had excluded this young man and found some drugs on him, and actually, the police were walking past, because it's obviously a very high-profile space in the city centre, and they stopped. And they saw that we'd excluded this young guy, or our security team had, and they, the police themselves arrested this kid. They searched him and arrested him. The news reporting indicated that he was, you know, found inside the venue. And there are other occasions of that happening, too. So, for example, there was an allegation of assault, where basically, it was painted in the most lurid terms in the Bristol Post, that, you know, there was some sort of cataclysmic violence incident going on inside the SWX venue. When you really drill into it, the facts of the matter of this, that individual was removed by our staff. He then ended up, forty-five minutes later, involved in a major incident half a mile down the road and was arrested, and there was a court case. But of course, the Bristol Post indicated that it was an incident at SWX. So my point is that when you're dealing with an iconic local venue, and of course, the Lead Mill is one, the local media like to sometimes unreliably attach a venue premises or a venue brand name to a particular incident. Now, if you drill into the detail on pretty much most or all of the allegations on social media, I mean, they're so voluminous, I mean, they go on for so many of these Google reviews and TripAdvisor and things. But if you look at the main ones, they are all, if you drill into them and you look at them carefully, they can all be, the concerns related can be extinguished. And there was also another quite important one, which I thought was quite important to note. There's an allegation of sexual assault of a rep, and a sexual assault of a young woman. And of course, that was posted all over the stopdominickmadden.com website, utterly defamatory. But the reality is, I didn't even own the business at that stage. If you look at the news report from Bristol Post, it was August 2017. Well, I bought SWX and concluded that transaction on the first of October. So all I'd like to say is, we don't live in, well, you know, there's almost something Trumpian about all this. Facts don't matter, but I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. One final one out of the complaints that are raised about you are in relation to the, I don't understand why this is being levelled against you, but there was the arson attack at the premises in Bristol. Premises were closed. It was a criminal attack.
So what happened was, there was a terribly sad story, really. So basically, this young guy, who was twenty-six, and he had a catastrophic mental health disaster, and he targeted SWX and other late-night premises in Bristol City Centre. And in fact, so two days before, we had an arson attack at four o'clock in the morning, and methylated spirits poured through the front door of the venue, and it resulted in a total, total catastrophic fire, which took about three days to put out. The backstory to this is that this young man also had fallen into a sort of rabbit hole of conspiracy theories. His mother had died, and there was addiction issues. And basically, he wrote to the leader of Bristol Council and attended his house at four o'clock in the morning and delivered a handwritten note saying that he was going to burn down SWX. And twenty-four hours later, he did. Now, that young man, the police managed unbelievably so to track him down through CCTV, and he was jailed for seven and a half years, and that was last year. The fire there resulted in a sort of a Pandora's Box of nightmare, really, because the SWX venue was incredibly culturally important, but it formed part of probably the last undeveloped part of Bristol City Centre. So, and a pension fund, I mean, talk about, there's been the mention of vulture funds in this, vulture capitalists, and I can assure you, I am not one of those. I've spent the last three years battling with various vulture capitalists to ensure that SWX was reopened in full. And I would just like to perhaps raise the question that if I was so in love with money and interested in building flats, I would have allowed SWX to be demolished and a three-hundred-and-fifty... I think the proposal from our landlord at the time was three hundred flats to go up on it, and I absolutely said no. And I was absolutely bloody-minded and single-minded in ensuring that SWX was fully refurbished and reopened, and I'm pleased to say it's been a phenomenal success since we reopened last September.
Thank you. Chair, there's one other person who's provided reports, which is Mr. Butterworth, who isn't here today, but he can access the meeting via a link. And I know because of a WhatsApp message, he's on the link, so I just wonder if we could introduce him into the meeting now. I'm not going to take long with him. I just want to pick up a couple of points within his report. Can you hear us, Mr. Butterworth?
I can hear you clearly when you're on individual mics. When you're on the open mic at the front, it goes a bit garbled.
Okay. I'll try and speak clearly. In the additional documents that the authority have, we have a witness statement and the appendices of your notes that you took from the visits that you carried out at all three of the premises. Just to try and confuse the committee, those have been reproduced in chronological order, so they are, for your record, at pages forty-five to fifty, fifty-two to sixty-one, and at sixty-five to seventy-seven. But the witness statement that you provided is at pages fifty-two onwards, which I just want you to refer to a few points, if you would. I'm not going to touch on your experience, because that's very, very clearly set out in your witness statement, but I'd like to move forward, if I can, to the section which is at page fifty-nine of the bundle, which is, in effect, your summary points at paragraphs forty-two to fifty. And I'm not going to take you to specific points, but I'd just ask you, if you could, to highlight why you came to the conclusion that these premises would fall into the category of good in the way that they're operated.
Can I firstly just check my sound levels? Am I coming through clear and okay?
We can hear you.
As I said earlier in the report, I've visited some two thousand-plus licensed premises across the country, and the majority of these are, I would refer to as, special measures or are under review or under summary review. So you get the best and you get the worst amongst that. And taken as a whole, I would categorise these premises as good rather than rich or poor.
And I think in the documents, you've assessed how people were behaving when they arrived, what the queue management system was like, how people were leaving, what their general demeanour was, and you've assessed the impact of those premises and whether they promote the licensing objectives.
I did, and from what I saw during those visits, all three premises were promoting the licensing objectives.
And you've seen the reproduction of all of the negative press comment that is in the objectors' bundle, that's been sought to relied upon to suggest that Mr. Madden isn't a good operator. And I think you clearly say in your witness statement you didn't see any behaviour that suggested that any of those press reports were being carried out at any of the premises whilst you were there.
I didn't witness any of that conduct that was referred to in any of the representations. And I always hesitate to challenge King's counsel on her interpretation of what I wrote, except it's probably the way I wrote it rather than any attempt on the part to mislead the committee. She says that there were searching policies breaches during my visits. I queried the searching policy differences between Exum, Bristol, Newcastle, with the managers of the venues at the time. And what informed me was that the condition on searching was that they were to be risk-assessed dependent on the type of event that was taking place. And the risk assessment at Brixton was that they would search and use the ID scanner. The risk assessment at Bristol and at Newcastle was that further searching was not required. So it wasn't a technical breach of the conditions and the search policies in those cases. The second point I would make is that this counsel also said that the ID scanners were brought out at Bristol and Newcastle, started to be used, and were then no longer used by the door staff as the night went on. If I had put that in my report, which I don't think I have, and apologize to the committee for misleading them, what actually happened was, again, the event was risk-assessed. A Brixton risk assessment was that they would use ID scanners. Risk assessment at Bristol and Newcastle was that they wouldn't use the ID scanners. So although the machines were there, the risk assessment was that they wouldn't be used on that evening. So again, no breach of the access policy was committed. And the final point I would make on King's counsel's comments is the reference to sugar coating, which I think is a bit over the belt, really. I've supplied to the committee a bit of my investigation. I've supplied all my compliance checks, and I have supplied my observations log.
I would want to ask a couple of questions. I don't know when would be appropriate.
Possibly never, but if we do get him back, we'll make sure you get the question in before he disappears again. Would you like to continue in the absence of Mr. Butterworth?
Thank you. I've virtually come to the end of my submissions now, so it'd be very helpful if you'd get Mr. Butterworth back to deal with Mrs. Clover's questions. But our position from this side of the table is very clear, in that we have made a valid shadow licence application. There was one point that I forgot to pick up on, which, Mrs. Clover, I keep on...
I'm not a Mrs. Clover case, but I'd very much rather be one than the other.
Can I call you sir? I'll call her sir, because I find it awkward calling her Mrs. Clover. The one point that I forgot to address you on was the suggestion that we didn't put a designated premises supervisor named in the application. Again, that's something that we do in all shadow licence applications. The designated premises supervisor has to be named before alcohol can be authorised, the sale of alcohol can be authorised at premises. So it would be significantly too early to be trying to name a designated premises supervisor on a shadow licence application. If and when this shadow licence application comes to life, then that's when a designated premises supervisor would be named, that person would be assessed, and that person would hopefully meet the criteria of the local police. So what our submissions are clear to you are is that this is a valid shadow licence application by the freeholder of this land. The way that the relationship is with the current operator is such that they have guaranteed that they would not transfer the premises licence to him should the property litigation be successful in my client's favour when it happens. So therefore, it's right and proper that we make a shadow licence application. We've then gone on to explain to you why all of this Google search opposition to the premises through things that are allegedly happening elsewhere, and as Mr. Madden said to you, some of them not actually in the premises, but given the trigger name of being at the premises, cannot be relied upon to refuse this shadow licence application. And that's why we've tried to produce testimony from people who wouldn't put their name forward unless this applicant was a fit and proper person to hold licences. And that, those are why those testimonies are in your documentation. The final piece of work is from Mr. Butterworth, because as a responsible operator, he thought it was important to have his systems checked by one of the industry specialist consultants, who has been honest and fair and put everything, including some very minor recommendations, in his report. So I'm going to stop my submissions at this stage, but we ask you certainly to grant this licence in line with it being very clearly a licence that can be granted in the terms that were set out by your legal adviser at the beginning of the hearing. But I see maybe we should grab the opportunity while we've got Mr. Butterworth back for Sarah to ask some questions.
Yes, given the potential for technical difficulties, would you like to ask any questions you have of Mr. Butterworth now?
Just a couple. First of all, Mr. Butterworth, you've got to stop calling me King's counsel. It's, I mean, if you're prepared to put it in writing, I'll have it, but I'm not. Secondly, Brixton didn't have an authorisation for alcohol supply. That's really serious, isn't it?
It's a basic of the Licensing Act, and you regularly find that that is in place when you attempt premises. So yes, I'd agree with you that.
You don't regularly find it, you invariably find it because it's the law, isn't it?
No, as I say, you regularly find it. I do attempt premises where it's not available, so for one reason or another, managers can't find the actual document. I can't say there isn't a document in existence. What I'm saying is the manager couldn't produce it, maybe it's required under the Act.
If he couldn't produce it to you, he wouldn't be able to produce it to the people who were selling alcohol, would he?
No, he wouldn't.
Finally, let's just bottom out this ID scanner thing. Do you have your reports in front of you?
I can access it, but if I do, I'll lose the connection again.
All right, well, don't worry about it, because we'll have some, I'll read it out to you, and others will stop me if I'm doing anything wrong. You did a report on your visit to SWX Bristol, and you're very concerned not to mislead the committee, so let's not. Nineteen hundred hours, I'm reading verbatim, the queue to enter the venue had grown to approximately two-hundred-and-fifty when the doors were opened for customers to enter. An ID scanner had been positioned at the front of the queue, and all customers appeared to have ID checked and given a pat-down search before entering. And then you talk about the security staff. Nineteen thirty hours, the queue had gone, and new arrivals were able to walk straight into the search area. I noted that the ID scanner was not being used, and customers did not get asked to remove their caps during the search. In your recommendations, you call that a concern. You didn't put it in your statement at all, and that's why I called it sugar coating. And all of that is correct, isn't it?
Apart from the ID scanner being used, the IDs were checked visibly by the door staff. They looked at them, weren't put into the ID scanner.
What you said a moment ago is that they did put a scanner out at Brixton... What you said a moment ago is that they did put a scanner out at Brixton, and they risk assessed that they didn't need to put one out at Bristol, and that's wrong, isn't it?
If I did say that, then that's my area, yes. They put the scanner out, they didn't use the scanner at either Bristol or Newcastle.
And if we can't rely on the accuracy of your reports, we have nothing, don't we, Mr Butterworth?
I don't think there's any difference between what I've just said and what is in my report. They got the scanners out, checked the IDs, and people would have no search and entered.
So we are to understand that what you mean at nineteen hundred hours is that they put the ID scanner out and then they didn't use it?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. I will now open this up for general questions to the applicant, starting with the committee. Karen, would you like to start us off?
Thanks very much. Yeah, we've, I just wanted to, excuse me, we've seen a lot of, I take what you say about when you took over the premises, some of the incidents that we've been given were before your time. I just wanted to ask you about things like, there's lots of comments within here that are more recent, so like January twenty twenty-three, where people have said things like about overcrowding at venues that you manage. And I just wondered how can you reassure us that those incidents won't happen here in Sheffield?
Could you specify which sort of Google review it is? Is that possible?
Yeah, so on page one seventy-four, this is just an example, there's a review of Electric Brixton, and it says this place was horrible, blah, 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 and then it says honestly, security and the fact that they probably oversold tickets made this place dangerous.
Well, all I can say, and I say this with great seriousness, you know, Electric Brixton is located between the Police Licensing Department and Lambeth Council. It is as a building, and we are inspected very regularly. We're an incredibly high-profile building. Our queue, it's an eighteen-hundred-capacity venue, so when we do gigs and club nights, you know, when it's busy, it's very obviously busy. And the Police Licensing team work very, very closely with our venue management staff. And I don't want to appear as if I'm making light of this. In fact, I take all this incredibly seriously. But, you know, I'm there, my office is there, and I'm there on the evenings, and I'm there during shows. And my teams take this very, very seriously. And in fact, if the committee would like to see evidence of the kind of show reporting we do, where, you know, in terms of security reports and show reports and that kind of evidence, I'm delighted to do that. I'll provide every reams of information. But the idea that we're some sort of dodgy white boy cowboy outfit that operates dodgy venues and pushes people in and allows people in and, you know, allows promoters to oversell tickets is just nonsense. I'm afraid to say it's nonsense. And I must say again, the veracity of some of these reviews, and I just, I wasn't going to say this, but I think it's important to say it. The Leadmill campaign has been utterly spirited, and I take my hat off to them for an amazing campaign. But I think they've crossed the line in terms of some of the tactics they've used. And what I'm concerned about is that, you know, it's a very easy line to say, hate Madden, go after him, you know, what's to stop them sending some kid down to Brixton to go in and write a bad review? And I'm not saying they've done that, but who's, how do we know they haven't? Because basically, where all of the evidence you're looking at is based on unverified Google reviews or TripAdvisor reviews, how do we know they're real? I'm not saying, I'm not saying that we don't have to take matters seriously, but I find it odd because, you know, for many, many years, I've been in Brixton, what, since two thousand and thirteen? Or, you know, running Electric and building these venues. There was, you know, the negative reviews suddenly appeared.
Can I just ask some reassurance then, what you would do if you started, if you were in Sheffield and you started getting reviews, what action would you take?
In terms of bad reviews?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, look, if you were putting in...
Not just bad reviews, but about health and safety issues.
It's critically important, isn't it? I mean, if you run and operate a public building, you've got to make sure that your track record, well, you've got to basically focus on compliance. I mean, you know, I just, in terms of refurbishing Newcastle and SWX, they're brand-new buildings. So both in terms of our approach, in terms of refurbishing those buildings, we've put in, you know, I mean, we spent three point two million pounds on the Newcastle refurbishment, and we spent three point seven million pounds on the Bristol refurbishment. So we put in, you know, the state of the art in terms of everything that you could possibly want to make sure the buildings are safe, both in terms of, you know, fire alarms and CCTV systems and, you know, all of those very, very important things. But coming back to the question of safety, I mean, that's down to the management of the premises, that's down to the people that you engage as an operator, that you're, to a degree, delegating trust and you're trusting their integrity and their experience. There's not that many people that actually do that, that you have trust to do that. Now, my DPS in Brixton, Michael Yardy, he worked for me at the Coronet in two thousand and four, three, four and five. He then went to Ministry of Sound and ran that as general manager and operations manager very successfully. And then he came to work for me in Brixton. And I must say, he's an outstanding operator. And we have a culture within the company that we grow our own. So I don't like going out and recruiting people who we don't know. We have a, it's a kind of, it's a small business culture where everyone is very accountable. Just for a second, if I could just focus on what I think the councillor's asking. Sorry. I know we have two days, but we don't need to use them. If I could just focus on what I think the councillor's asking you about with two questions. In relation to your three premises at the moment, have you had health and safety issues that have been flagged up to you by the responsible authorities that have led to concern? No. If you had any from those responsible authorities or here in Sheffield, when you hopefully eventually can trade, how would you deal with them? We'd deal with it head-on. If there was a concern, you would deal with it head-on and you would fix it. Thank you. I hope that helps, Karen.
Thank you, Chair. Just one more question. We've heard from some voluntary organisations and community groups, which sounds fantastic work that we do. How can you reassure the community and the voluntary groups about the future and the work that they do, that the city needs?
I've always said that we're in a very unfortunate position here because we haven't been able to share our vision in any derigery of detail because of some active live legal proceedings. So there are things that our solicitors have said I cannot share or talk about because it prejudices a hearing which, I'm led to believe, is likely to be in February, March next year, not to the back end of two thousand and twenty-four. I'm not a crook coming into Sheffield to destroy the Leadmill. I've said this repeatedly. And I, the one thing I would like to say is I am extremely sorry that the relationship between myself and Mr Mills has broken down to the stage where we're not, you know, we've never even spoken. And I wrote to Mr Mills a number of times, so I've tried to put out an audit branch back pre these proceedings, but for some reason, those conversations never happened. But anyway, what I would like to do is to personally, and I'm sure people will be incredibly sceptical because they, and rightly so, they should be. And in fact, I think a promoter, a well-known Sheffield promoter used the phrase, Dominic Madden needs to earn his stripes in Sheffield, which is quite right too, quite right too. But I would just like to say that, you know, I'm not interested in coming in and destroying something which is important for people. You know, we operate important live music venues and cultural venues up and down the country. And specifically in relation to the community projects you're talking about, we, I'm hoping to put together a method of operation which I would like, I would view it to be enormously successful if effectively nobody notices much difference in terms of the quality of the work that's presented at the venue and the types of initiatives, you know, continuing a lot of the stuff that's happening at the moment in terms of community engagement and projects. I mean, for example, the studio spaces at the top of the building that are being operated and used by businesses and entrepreneurs and things. I would like, in a perfect world, a lot of that would stay exactly the same.
Thank you, Chair. Oh, this is slightly overlapping with questions from councillor McGowan. As mentioned by many people, the benefits of the Leadmill to Sheffield go far beyond its presence just as a music venue.
Yeah.
Do any of your other venues run this model where they are a community space that provides an asset beyond being a music venue to the community?
Well, Brixton sort of does. There are certain elements of its programming which are more, you know, in terms of we work a partner with some community groups. And so, yes, I would say yes. In Bristol, no, because we had the fire and our focus has just been, because basically what happened is we opened Bristol in two thousand and seventeen as a live music venue. And obviously, we're programmed eighteen months ahead for concerts, and then we hit Covid, and then we hit the fire. So our focus has been in Bristol entirely, just trying to catch up on the live shows that were rescheduled in terms of programming. But, so yes, in terms of Brixton, but not in terms of Bristol. And in terms of Newcastle, it's a brand-new thing. We only opened Newcastle first of October last year. And, and look, just to reiterate this point, you know, I've done a, my, going back to my speech earlier, boring you all about my background, my background's in theatre. And I know, they're, one of the reasons why I was fascinated by the Leadmill was it's a theatre space. You know, a friend of mine, Robert Noble, ran it when it was the Compass Theatre Company. So I understand its roots. I'm not Peter Marks from Recon nightclub chain coming in and wanting to put up, you know, I'm not putting Prism into Sheffield, that's not my vision here. And in fact, in an ideal world, we would, I would try and embrace as much of the great things that are already happening. And in an ideal world, I keep on going back to this, you know, in a normal scenario, if the parties weren't in dispute, as was the case in Newcastle, there's a, usually the baton is passed from one person to the next.
A couple of things from it. I mean, you've actually owned the building for some time now.
Two thousand sixteen, seventeen, yeah.
What were your original intentions for the building when you bought it? Have they changed at all over that period?
Well, really, our intention in two thousand and sixteen, seventeen was that we were, well, basically it was to a couple of points. One was, it was obviously being, so I was approached by a developer who, well, it was an agent actually on behalf of a developer, who owned it at the time. And their intention was to put forward a residential redevelopment of the site, which, but they owned, they owned an awful lot of property. And my view of that was that that was bonkers. But at that stage, I knew that the Leadmill had a significant cultural importance as a building in the city. And I said to them, well, that was completely bonkers. There's no way they could, you know, redevelop the Leadmill. And also, the hacienda had previously been redeveloped for flats. And I could come back to this, you know, you know, the idea that I am somehow somebody that would tolerate or be interested in redevelopment of cultural buildings for flats is just complete nonsense. Absolute nonsense. So when we bought it, my interest was just, you know, we just also, we were in negotiations to acquire the Bristol venue. And it's always very much my interest has been seen about, as I say, developing this circuit around the country to complement the academy circuit, which is two thousand, which is a much larger space. And I do believe that there is an important opportunity here. So that, you know, bands that are playing SWX, and in fact, a lot of the bands already play SWX, already played the Leadmill. But there is an opportunity here for, you know, the more venues you, I always say that the more venues you have of a certain capacity in important cities, the more vibrant those scenes become. Because as a venue operator, the more you're talking to promoters, the more shows you get. But just to be clear, there's never been any interest in our ownership and interest in this building other than operating it as a music venue.
So in terms of operating as a music venue, there's currently an operator in there. You know, you talked about, you know, I'm standing operators, you know, you've seen the sport from the people of Sheffield. And we've heard today, you know, he's popular with the public, popular with staff, and popular with neighbours. Was there never an option to continue under current management? Did that?
Well, I think, a couple of points here. One is the building was available at auction. So I only ended up buying the building after it had been at auction twice and a failed sell. And I, look, I'm not getting into who did what and when, because it's irrelevant. But I know that the current operator, who's a very longstanding operator and has been around a long time and has done very well and very successfully, Mr Mills, he had an opportunity to buy it. I'm, you know, I'm somebody that invests in buildings, I'm not interested in developing them. We bought it, we were offered it, we thought it was a great opportunity. It fitted into my vision of developing a circuit of live music venues which could invigorate and, you know, important spaces, et cetera. And we bought it. I mean, that was it. I mean, and it's not like, I mean, it's not like I went in and bought it and thought, I'll kick Mr Mills out. I wrote to Mr Mills twice in October and December two thousand and twenty-one. Again, I'll, Paddy can provide evidence to the committee, asking, inviting Mr Mills to meet with me to discuss the position, and those letters were never responded to. So what am I supposed to do?
Can I just ask about the application? Some questions have been raised about it, but in terms of the existing licence, you must have known when you saw that that it was quite unique for the venue and that it probably has a new licence application, if that's what you put in, the chances of getting it would be incredibly low. Why then just go for a straightforward shadow licence? Why not look for something different at this stage rather than just transfer something that is a bit of an anomaly?
Yeah, it's a very good point, and Sarah was right when she said that you, you know, you look at that licence against, which it was a grandfather licence, you can see that on the nature, on the front of the form. But we applied the way that we did because it's a valid route to make a shadow licence application. It was always my view that what would then happen would be probably a variation application if we had to bring it to life. We didn't know at that stage whether we'd get to a point where the existing operator would transfer the licence to us, in which case we would have the benefit of that licence that exists at the moment. There would, there will undoubtedly, as there have been with the Bristol and the Newcastle premises, be a need for me to make a variation application because I'm sure that the layout of the premises, the physical layout of the premises will change. And that would be a variation application. What we would expect to see then is at the stage that that shadow licence that we've now applied for comes off the shelf, that there would be a level of interaction by the responsible authorities in relation to us wanting to be a live operator. And during that variation and bringing the licence to life, we would expect through a very close relationship with the responsible authorities to have agreed what they wanted to see on the licence. We didn't have to do a shadow licence application, we had to transfer the licence in Bristol, in Newcastle. In Bristol, we actually bought the company, so we got the benefit of the licence. But in both of those locations, once the responsible authorities saw what the state, the type of operation would be and what Mr Madden wanted to do, we agreed additional conditions with the responsible authorities to reflect that. So I always envisaged that this would be a shadow licence that would sit on the shelf, and then when it's brought to life, it would be something that the responsible authorities may well wish to look at modernising with additional conditions. What then happened, obviously, is that we received a request to consider those conditions to go... to go on the licence now, which are referred to in your bundle. And we didn't have issues with what your responsible authorities, being the experts on crime and disorder, public nuisance, public safety, and ensuring children from harm, wanted on the licence. So we accepted those conditions. They are experts, that's what they wanted us to do. But we always anticipated that the licence as it currently stands would change once it became operational. But the right thing to do is to apply for the shadow licence at this stage.
Yeah, no, thank you, Chair.
Sam? Jimler, anything from the agency? And I just think the interesting part is, may I have a few questions?
No, Chair, I'm going to double check my instructions, but it's my practice, like Mr Wur, to make submissions rather than ask lots of questions. I think that is to you better and it's a better use of time, but I will just double check. Trust me.
Right then, if we're moving on to summing up, I don't know how long people wish to take for summing up, but when you get to my age, you do tend to need a break after about this time. So if we took sort of forty-five minutes for people to stretch their legs and eat and nicotine levels for some of us as well to become important, and reconvene at, he says, looking at his clock? Yeah, a quarter past two for the summing up. So thank you for your time this morning and we'll get some air. The happy turn, we managed to go through a full morning without putting you off, so commended for that. So we come to sort of the end of proceedings today, which is the summing up. And the first people to sum up are the interested parties, so over to you.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be as precise as I can. I won't repeat things that I've said earlier, I hope. And the intention is to pick up on some of the things that came out of the applicant's presentation and just make some observations about those particularly. Well, Mr Wur has said to you that this application couldn't have been clearer. Beg to differ, but he says it is a shadow licence. No question, it's a shadow licence. He said it's in the same terms as the existing licence and that is correct. It's not false, it's not incorrect, it's correct. But it's not, is it? With best will in the world, this is not in the same terms as the existing licence, specifically in relation to the conditions that are now going on it. And this business about shadow licence, there's two parts to it. There's the technical part. Is it a shadow licence in law? And for that, I would refer you back to Extreme Oyster. And I've excerpted the relevant paragraphs within the representation. Obviously, you'll be advised appropriately, but those are the bits. And in paragraph thirty-one of Extreme Oyster, which is on page five of my representation, it says shadow means identical. So far as the licensable activities are concerned, so it was talking about, you wouldn't be able to add a new licensable activity and so forth. But the conditions, when the conditions are different, you're talking about, they're not mirrors anymore, they're not shadows anymore. But even if you put the legal, the technical legal point to one side, the shadow's being used in another way here. Mr Wur says it's not going to be an operating licence. It's not going to be operated. It will sit on a shelf, he said. And that's the mean, that's the practical meaning of shadow as far as the applicant is concerned. So the practical issue then is, will it be used? And if it will be used, when? Because Mr Madden's case on this at best is schizophrenic. And it really would have worked better if he had talked to Mr Wur about this beforehand. Because, do you remember the long answer, if one can call it an answer, that was given to the question of, what is your vision? What are you going to do with these premises? And there was this long rambling response. And at the end of that long rambling response came this, and I've written it down verbatim. Mr Madden says, there has never been any interest in this building other than operating it immediately. And that is what he said. So within the same application and on the same table, you've got, it's going to go on a shelf and I've never had any interest other than operating it immediately. And that's what's wrong with this application. And I was asked by the Chair earlier, even if the technicalities of this licence were ironed out, would you still be making representations against Mr Madden? And the answer is yes. And I didn't need to ask him any questions, as my client was indicating, I might wish to, to draw out inaccuracies or lack of integrity or authenticity, because Mr Madden's done it for himself. You will have got the measure of Mr Madden from the way Mr Madden presents himself to you. And I don't need to put any icing on that particular cake. If Mr Madden did not have an intention to trade as soon as possible, and of course, there is the impediment of getting into the premises, but if it wasn't his intention to trade as soon as possible and he was going to put this licence on a shelf, why not make it for a future date? Why not put a future date on it? Why not make an application for a provisional statement? Why not, even now, offer you a condition that it wouldn't be traded until certain steps have been taken, such as informing whomever, the licensing department, the council or whatever? I raised a number of these points in my earlier submissions, thinking perhaps that the applicant would address them and answer them and offer some more conditions or offer some clarity in the wording of what was on the table. And I've been surprised to find that isn't the case. Of course, the reason why there can be no condition from him that the licence won't be traded with immediate effect is because that spoils the whole purpose of the exercise, which is in the landlord and tenant courts to remove the impediment to trading, which is the barrier to securing the eviction. So a licence that says it cannot be traded doesn't do the job. Because it's only with that piece of paper that enables imminent trading, that Mr Madden can go into the landlord and tenant court and say, there's no impediment to me taking this business and under landlord and tenant rules, I can now evict this tenant. If there are continuing impediments, he couldn't do that. So to have to come back to you to answer that condition would be such an impediment. And hence, the catch twenty-two, the dilemma, as I've called it, the Frankenstein's monster of a licence. It was always supposed to be simple. It was always just supposed to be a like-for-like with those five conditions on it. And had it not been for the fact that this existing licence is a unicorn, that might have worked. But it is a unicorn and so you can't do it. And the licensing officer wasn't wrong to accept the application as it was originally made, and I never said that they were. It was correct and accurate at the time that it was made. It was a shadow because that's all it wanted, the same five conditions. And it's only when it departs from that that it becomes an inaccurate application that hasn't been corrected in front of you. And it's not proper to grant it. Mr Madden wants to operate the Leadmill himself, there's no real secret about it, he's not making a secret about it. He's still maintaining through Mr Wur that he only wishes to protect the licence, but protect it from what? What does he need to protect it from? It's been in operation for forty-some years. Mr Mills has been there since time immemorial. There's no impediment to the Leadmill continuing, there's no danger of it not continuing. What is Mr Madden protecting it from with a shadow licence? It's a sham. It's not to protect anything, it's because he wants it. And his case, therefore, veers between, I only want a shadow licence, I won't trade it, I promise, it's going on a shelf, it'll be up there nice and safe, not to worry. And that's why I don't need to offer you a DPS and I don't need to think about door security and I don't need to come up with conditions and all of those things, none of those things matter. And at the same time, I'm a great operator. You can trust me, I'll invest in it, I'll do it all properly, I'll delegate to great people that I trust. And this is my vision. This is what I'm going to do with it. And you can't quite land on one or other of those positions, but that means you don't know what you're granting. And Mr Madden relies pretty much entirely on his gift of the gab, his romantic theatrical backstory with the Elton John soundtrack, his White Knight chequebook that's going to come in and pay for everything, oh, and threats, which is a new tack. Further defamation proceedings, even apparently for participating in this democratic process. There could be further defamation proceedings, which is ugly. The Hamlin's letter that was put into your pack without the response from Mr Mills, which is also in Mr Madden's possession, was quickly knocked on the head by said response, which was, it's true. Can't bring defamation proceedings for things that are true. Let's see you, Hamlins. No reply. Or you would have seen that reply as well. So that was the end of that, didn't go any further. Still not dealing with these incidents and reviews, is he? The answer to that is, well, if any of this was true, if all of these incidents, the twenty nineteen stabbing at Brixton, which did happen, or the two GBHs at Bristol, which did happen, if any of those things happened, the responsible authorities would have something to say about it. But in fact, they're very comfortable with us about it. And in fact, you know for a fact that Bristol aren't because the Bristol Police, in the cumulative impact assessment report, detailed how many incidents they held to account against the Bristol premises, SWX, and were concerned enough to maintain that cumulative impact cordon around it. So the material in the bundle is empirical. So far as the particular reviews are concerned, Mr Madden's response to that was, well, TripAdvisor and Skittle and all of these other reviews are so voluminous, as if to say, so you can write them off. No, they're so voluminous and that's the problem, that there are so many of them. He said this, he said, if you look at them carefully, they can be extinguished. Don't know what that means. People are giving their reviews on their experiences and people give bad reviews, sure they do, and they give bad reviews as a sort of a kickback or a spiteful thing. But there are a lot of them. And that is why I invited you to pick out the themes of them, to see if there was any consistency. Because if there's lots of very variable things being said and they don't seem to hang together with any coherence, that's one thing. But when a lot of people are saying the same things over and over again, that gives cause for concern. Perhaps you will have noticed how Mr Madden hasn't really answered any of the questions, either the rhetorical questions that I put in my submissions or the direct questions that he was asked by the committee. Or if he did answer them, he blustered in doing so. And he hasn't addressed those incidents. He said it's lurid media reporting. Well, some of the responses he wished to give came for the first time in the middle of this hearing. This is the fourth application, this is the fourth time this application's been on the table. So if there are incident logs, if there are police statements, if there are any pieces of empirical evidence that could demonstrate that what's in your pack is not actually the correct picture about what had happened, you might have expected to see it by now. He didn't give any direct answer to his reference letters. I was saying, I thought very clearly that Mr Davis and Mr Kill hadn't written their own letters and Mr Madden had done so, or somebody on his behalf. And that's how we end up with square brackets that are supposed to be edited out on the final signature, saying, enter your contact details here. There's no direct response to that, there's no, that isn't what happened. I think the answer was, I don't understand Sarah Clover's point. Well, I hope I've made it really clear now and perhaps there'll be a direct reply to it this time. And of course, let's not forget it had the date error in both of those letters as well. So direct questions that Mr Madden hasn't answered, who would be the DPS? Who would be the door security company? And the wording of these conditions, only, well, the responsible authorities are happy. Well, that's not the point. The point is whether you, as the committee, are happy. And I've pointed out the deficiencies in the wording, they are completely unenforceable and not a word has been said to reassure you on that. Direct question from the councillor, how can you reassure us that these sorts of things, i.e. in the reviews and the incidents, won't happen in Sheffield? Answer, well, which review are you talking about? All of them? The arson, I wasn't levelling it at anybody. It's not Mr Madden's fault or SWX's fault, no doubt. My point was that you don't want in your list of themes of criticisms of a potential licensee overcrowding and overselling juxtaposed with the risk of fire. And SWX only stands as a reminder of the worst things that can happen when you have endemic problems of overcrowding and overselling tickets. Mr Madden's only answer to it is, well, it's preposterous that we would oversell. Not according to the reviews. And there are a lot of them. And it's a bit of a random thing for people to be making up if there's no truth in it at all. And the idea that perhaps all of this is just a conspiracy theory by Leadmill supporters who have, what was it, sent people to the premises to make up fake reviews? Well, you wouldn't actually need to send them to the premises if you were going to make up a fake review, you could just do it from your home. But that pedantic point to one side, that's a bit of a lame response as to where all these reviews have come from. And when I say to you, Mr Madden reveals himself to you, these are the sorts of things I'm talking about. He says, well, the police are fine with this, the police are happy, responsible authorities are happy. How would the police in Brixton or Bristol or anywhere else know what people's experience was like inside the premises of queuing or waiting for their bags and coats at the cloakroom, unless somebody made a report to the police? You're not necessarily going to get that kind of police surveillance. The police are concerned about the higher level incidents and the idea that they're not is fatuous. The incidents that are in your pack, unless it's being suggested that Leadmill have also photoshopped the photographs of the Black Eyes and the GBHs and so forth, that hasn't been addressed either. The other thing that hasn't been addressed at all is the public sector equality duty. And my comment on that is that the way Mr Madden has approached this application is to make this potential licence fall between two stools. to make this potential licence fall between two stools. It's not the shadow that he suggested, he would get an immediately operable licence or a potentially immediately operable licence, but because of the way that it's been done, he never needs to engage with the community. He's travelled that line between the two, means he can operate tomorrow, whenever you were to decide to grant it, and he's bypassed that whole piece, including compliance with your statement of licensing policy, which requires him to go out and assess the area and deal with neighbours and deal with businesses and deal with the charities and deal with the community and the community interests and so forth. It's not accepted that he has attempted to communicate positively and proactively with Mr Mills and if he was in good faith, he could have done so much more. What did he say to you? He said, "Well, I wrote twice and I didn't get a reply." Well, in this technological age, if you write two letters and post them and you don't get a response, what are you supposed to do? You could pop round, of course, just a thought. What was to stop Mr Madden from communicating his vision, which he now regrets he hasn't had an opportunity to do? Who was stopping him? Why not? Why not go to the Leadmill? Why not engage with the local businesses? Why not pick up the phone? Why not knock on a door? Why not put up a post on social media or any of those things? And when asked, I reiterate by the Chair of the Committee, what his intention was for this building from 2016, I think he said about thirty-five words before a sentence began to emerge and then he said it was never his intention to develop it for flats, he wanted to complete the circuit. That's the electric brand, that's what he wants, he wants to extend the electric brand into Sheffield and that's been his interest from day one. So it's Mr Worr who is focused on the shadow licence and Mr Worr alone and what Mr Worr said was that he'd get the shadow licence and he appreciated, he agrees with me, that this unicorn licence has outlived its time and should have more conditions on it for a new operator and what he was going to do was to go back to the responsible authorities later to get some more conditions on it. How does that work? Was he going to review his own licence? Because a review is what would be required, unless, I suppose, he was going to make a further application. Why would you do that? It is a Frankenstein's monster, it is neither one thing nor another, it's not fit for purpose, it's not in reliable hands, it's not something that you would wish to endorse, you do want your responsible authorities to work with you on this one, they're not here, that's deplorable. And for all of the reasons that I have set out all day today, this is an application that should be firmly and robustly rejected. Thank you.
Thank you. Down to the applicants to sum up the application.
Thank you very much, Chair. It was always going to be the case that you would get a skillful argument put before you by Sarah today, here on behalf of the commercial object. We are, the elephant in the room is well and truly gone, we know where we are and what the circumstances are. I'm going to ask you very firmly, fairly and squarely to focus on the test that Mr Hope set out to you at the beginning of these proceedings. This is a properly made shadow licence application, which has been made by the freeholder, the business owner of these premises. And I think everything that you've heard today in relation to the stance that's been taken by the primary objector is clear evidence of why there was a need to do that. It suggested that we could have made a provisional statement licence application. Well, there is unicorn-like as the suggestion has been made about the existing Leadmill premises licence, that's not a route that would be ever considered, because it's very clear that the law and the case law allows somebody in Mr Madden's position to make a valid shadow licence application and that was what was made and that was what was accepted by the licensing authority. Now, in Sarah's written statement, she says that the licensee, and she's reinforced it during her closing submissions, the licensee granted would breach the licensing objectives. I respectfully suggest to you that there isn't any evidence put before this committee to support that contention today. It's also suggested that Mr Madden is not a suitable person to be an operator of the Leadmill and it's my respectful submission through what I'm going to talk to you about now and what you've heard so far, that you cannot fairly make that conclusion. We're told by Sarah that the applicant is incapable of delivering a safe and compliant operation. Well, he does so in three distinct venues around the country without any issues with the responsible authorities. What I find quite surprising about the stance that's been taken by the objector in this case is that we have a situation where all of the responsible authorities on her submissions are not doing their job properly and the fact that the responsible authorities are not here today, she says, is deplorable. I'm quite shocked about the language that's been used. I'm also quite shocked about the phraseology such as "the police should have put their foot down" and also the fact that it came out that the police had been chivvied to be here and the phrase that was put that wasn't, I don't know where it came from and it took us by such a shock that we didn't really think about it until over lunchtime, was when it was suggested that the unusual reluctance of the police to be here is because Mr Madden would sue. Well, that's the kind of approach that's been taken by the objector to try and, in front of you, demolish an operator with a very clear track record and try and queer his pitch in front of you as a committee. And I think that it's very, very important that you just think about the fact that it's Mr Madden who's being described as arrogant, I think that's a very heavy-handed approach that's been taken by the trade objector. In relation to the shadow licence, I've got one further point to make where Sarah says that it wouldn't be a shadow licence because of the conditions that have been offered, sorry, been put forward by the responsibility, responsible authorities and accepted. If you actually read the judgment carefully at the point that she raises to you, it's about identical, i.e. the licensable activities, there is no mention in that section of the judgment in relation to conditions. What it's saying is that if you're applying for licensable activities that were outside of what the shadow, the trading licence is, then in all of those circumstances, it wouldn't be a shadow licence. So there's certainly nothing to stop the process from happening the way that it's happened so far in these proceedings. And I go back to where we are, if we win in the High Court, if Dominic's company wins in the High Court, then the shadow licence would be taken off the shelf and it would be reviewed before it came an operating licence, an application would be made for a designated premises supervisor with a personal licence to be attached to that licence, it's not appropriate for that to happen at the moment, it isn't in any shadow licence that I've ever seen. And what we would do, as I said, review the licence, conveniently misrepresented, I said that we would make a variation application because the layout will undoubtedly change. What you can see from Bristol and Newcastle is that Mr Madden has spent multiple millions of pounds on those two sites before he's brought them back to life and that process involved engagement with all of the responsible authorities, planning applications, external smoking areas, fabulous new facilities, but in negotiation with all of your responsible authorities, that's the way this process works, that's entirely the way this process works. And if Dominic loses the High Court action, whenever that may be next year, then this shadow licence stays on the shelf, that's the way these things work, that's the way that these licences are issued to the landowner to protect their legitimate business interests. Now, it's up for the High Court to determine the issues that they will determine, but I just want to correct one point which Sarah said. She said that we need the premises licence as evidence of an entitlement to run the premises to win at the High Court, that's not the statutory test. It's not an issue for you anyway, but that is a misrepresentation of what the statutory test is and in all of the circumstances, it's not relevant to your considerations today, you're assessing this licence under the Licensing Act when judged against the licensing objectives. Can I deal with the other representations? I know, I do these cases, as does Sarah, all over the country and it is fantastic to hear local people talking passionately about something that they feel so much care for and that's always the case and I think, Chair, at the very beginning, you said it's an important function of public hearings for people who want to put something before the committee to do so and you heard in loud and clear terms the amount of love there is for the Leadmill. In relation to this test today, I would ask you to bear in mind what Mr Hope told you, this is a permissive piece of legislation and it's all about whether Mr Madden can have the shadow licence. Whatever happens next year, the year after, whether Leadmill continues to trade and the shadow licence stays on the shelf, whether, very disappointing to those people who have got such an attachment to the Leadmill, Mr Madden wins the case and he's allowed to bring his vision of a culturally important live music and event space to Sheffield, that's something that the local people are going to have to deal with and it may be something that if Mr Madden wins his case, he's going to have a significant public campaign on his hands to satisfy people that they should love his venue as much as they've loved the Leadmill. But that, I'm afraid, is all something that's not part of your discretion today. Would it be appropriate and proportionate to promote the licensing objectives for this application to be granted? I would suggest in very, very clear terms, you've not heard any evidence as to why that isn't the case and I'm just going to touch on what you have heard. Now, one of the reasons that we have been cautious in the way that we have tried to deal with the Google reviews, the TripAdvisor reviews that are produced before you is because they are hearsay evidence. Quite often, and you're entitled to take consideration of hearsay evidence in licensing cases, but quite often, things like this are put in to support a primary representation, for example, by the police in relation to crime and disorder, or by environmental health officers in relation to environmental nuisance, or by another officer who's making issues in relation to child protection issues. So these are quite often produced as secondary evidence to sit behind a primary objection to an application. It would be wrong in my respectful submissions to rely upon those in primary position when there isn't any other evidence before you and I'm just going to talk about the other evidence in relation to some of the things that have been disclosed and this is why I make my submissions on this. One offence is referred to in relation to Bristol before my client owned it, as he explained to you. The fire that took place, which nearly brought the business down, is put forward as a reason why you shouldn't grant this licence, he was the victim of a crime. People who were smoking and dealing in cannabis away from the premises had the premises named in the report that was in the press. These are not sufficiently reliable for you to form a view that this operator is not fit and proper to operate this licence. And why do I say that? Because Amy Lemay, Amy Lemay, the nights are in London, tells you in an email that she is supportive of everything he's done at Brixton. You've got the leader of Lambeth saying the same thing. I don't actually understand what Sarah's saying about the IOL and the NTIA letters, they were emailed to me by Mr Kill, by Mr Davis, I don't know whether there's a suggestion that we've concocted that as a piece of evidence, but I'm not going to defend that position, they're signed in their names, they were emailed to me and they were produced to the authority correctly, so I really don't understand the position there. Carly Heath, who is the Night Time Economy Advisor for Bristol, tells you how important that venue is in Bristol and it may well be that it is maintained in accumulative impact policy areas because it's part of the night time economy, there will be dispersal, there'll be taxes, there'll be late night food establishments, that's a matter for Bristol. But the most important thing is Dominic tells you, he's got a fantastic relationship with the authorities and he's never had negative interaction, never had a review of one of his premises licences and he's invested multi-million pounds in the venues that he's taken forward once he's become the operator of the premises. So in all of the circumstances, I suggest to you, there's no evidence before you as to why this application should not be granted. I would say that all of the evidence is in the other side of the argument, you've got a responsible operator, he's got a fabulous track record and he wants to invest in these premises in Sheffield to do what he's done elsewhere and in all of those circumstances, I commend the shadow licence application to you.
Thank you. Could we have the options available to the committee, please?
Thank you, Chair. The options open to the committee are, one, to grant the premises licence in the terms requested, two, to grant the premises licence with conditions, and three, to reject the whole or part of the application. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. What happens now is that the committee will go away and sit down with our legal advisers and consider all the evidence that's been presented in the pack, everything that's been said today, I'll try and read my own handwriting, extensive notes of the points that have been made and having considered that and taken legal advice, we will come to a decision as per one of the options that's been given to us there. I don't think, and I know we won't come to that decision quickly because there's so much to do and it would do a disservice to everyone if we came back in five minutes, I think this is going to take the best part of half a day to go through this evidence and to come to a decision, which is one of the reasons we blocked out tomorrow. So we're going to retire now and start to consider the evidence, we will come to a decision when we come to a decision and that will be communicated in line with the Licensing Act, but I wouldn't expect people to sit around in here till nine o'clock tonight and wait for us to come back in looking weary and saying, "We're going to bed and we'll come back tomorrow." But I would like to say thank you to everybody that's participated in this, you know, as a Sheffielder, I know the strength of feeling and I know the strength of feeling on both sides, you have a businessman who wants to run a business, but the way you behaved has been impeccable, the way you've presented your evidence to us has made a difficult job much easier, you've been very clear, very straightforward, you've been to the point and that is really, really helpful to us in making a decision, so thank you for that and everyone who's participated will be informed of the decision as soon as it's ready, so thank you, everyone.
I'm hoping so.
Yeah, just as a point of caution.
Yeah, just as a point of clarification, please excuse me, Sarah and I were just talking, is it the intention of the committee that the decision will then be emailed out? There's no need for us to be here at all tomorrow? I mean, that's something that lots of authorities have been doing since the Covid period, I think it is useful to everybody.
I believe that will be the case, Chair.
That's really helpful, thank you very much.
I mean, I'm happy to come in and communicate with anybody who wants to come in and see me tomorrow, but I think probably email would be better.